All rise. Councilors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Chair, just ahead of that, sorry, on a, just some details, your advice about the first in-person meeting, in terms of mask wearing, are we required to keep?
The advice from those CEO that was circulated was that with social distancing, 1.5 metres as per the seating arrangement, you can take your mask off while seated, moving around, then you would need to put the mask back on.
And one other item, not whilst speaking?
Not whilst speaking, no.
Or seated.
So while you're at your desk, in your seat, or standing at your seat, you were able to take your mask off?
Thanks. And just following up on that, Chair, is the chamber considered a place where people need to be fully vaxxed? Coming to, I know there's not a check-in, but what are the requirements in terms of that for staff and councillors?
That's not an issue that I'm aware of. I think we're here under the directive of the Department of Health and we're following Department of Health guidelines.
But, you know, in state and federal parliament, everyone is required to be fully vaccinated to be in here. We're not. Is that the case?
I haven't got advice on that one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, just for the sake of the clerks and all councillors and staff that we interact with and with the attendants, I can confirm that all Labor councillors and our staff are fully vaccinated.
Thank you. Apologies. Are there any apologies?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, councillor, councillor Landers, yes.
I advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Murphy will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Murphy and Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,670th meeting held on Tuesday, 8th of February 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by the deputy mayor that the minutes of the 4,670th meeting of council held on 8th February 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant here this afternoon. I'd like to call on Mr. Michael Robinson, who'll be coming into the chamber to address us on Brisbane South First Aid Volunteers.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, you can sit or stand depending on your preference, and once your microphone is on, you'll have five minutes to speak and then there'll be a response provided to you. Thank you. You have five minutes.
Mr. Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I, my name's Michael Robinson, I'm president of Brisbane South First Aid Volunteers. We are an incorporated organisation that has, and we're a member of ACNC, which is a charity organisation. We are part of QFAB Queensland First Aid Volunteers, which is our state body. There's about seven groups.
Just a moment. There's an off button, there is an off button. Okay, please say it again.
There's about seven of us, seven of these groups around, in Queensland. We have one in Western Australia, which is a different organisation. We provide first aid services to the community for different events, fates, a whole range of that. We do Christmas, we've done carols, a few carols, we've done rodeos, just about any event where you need first aid, we do NZAC Day locally, but, and we don't charge a fortune, we do donations by donations. We give a quote for a donation and that's a negotiable quote, but we are much, much cheaper than any of the professional organisations. We're even cheaper than St. John's. And a lot of our people are ex-St. John's. My brother, who's the event coordinator, was 14 years in St. John's. We are trained and qualified, we're all qualified in first aid. I, as a medic, all our medics have further training with oxygen therapy and we also have pain management, which means we can give the green whistle, if you're aware of methoxine. We can do epipen, subbutamol, which is your asthma sprays. And we just, last year, we are doing Narcan. We'll now be able to do Narcan. So if we get, we're not going to get it, but if we get a drug overdose, we can now apply Narcan when they decide which way they're going to do it. Of course, you can either have it IM or up the nose and they haven't decided yet. But we, as I said, we provide, all our people are very well trained, we have equipment to match any professional organisation, to match any professional organisation. We have oxygen, we have, we have first aid kits that are very extensive, AEDs, and as I said, all our people are well trained. And any donations we get go back into the maintenance of our equipment or the training of our first aid people because we, we pay for uniforms, we pay for all the training, and we get equipment. And we're very lucky that the Heritage Bank in Forest Lake has given us some really good donations. Councillor Strunk, when we very first, when we started way back when, because we're based, our registered address is in Allen Grove, and councillor Strunk, way back when we first started, which was nearly four years ago, provided us with some funds to buy some marquees. Since then, we have now have marquees that are well signed and everything else. Yeah, we, and the reason I appreciate this is because I was going to, we operate the south side of the river, and we operate right down to Cleveland, right up to Layley, and we actually do the Gold Coast because there is nobody else on this side of the river that does what we do. There are paid ones, as I said, but we are the only ones that do that. And we've done some events down the Gold Coast, and we've done some up at Spirit of the Valley, which is an organisation that operates Layley, Gatton, all that sort of area. We do a lot of events for them, we do their NADOCs, we do their multicultural, trying to think, there's colours of Lockyer, they're just some that are repeat ones. This year, we're doing Camp Hill State School, we're doing a 10-hour shift there because we're, they're going into the night, so we've got a 10-hour shift there. We also have a generator, which is very kindly sponsored by Anastasia. She paid for our generator, which is good for us because some events we go to, there is no power, and we need, if we're doing night time, we need lights so that we can see what we're doing. So, yeah, we've got Camp Hill State School, we've got a few events coming up. We're hoping to get Redfest, I know that's out of your jurisdiction, but Redfest, which is down at Redlands, we're hoping to get that back, which is a three-night event. Goodna Jackaranda Festival, we're hoping to get that back because they're coming back this year. They informed me last year. So there are a couple that are coming back, but others we have already.
Mr. Robinson, thank you. Let you go a bit longer because of those slight interruptions, but thank you, your time has expired. Councillor Howard, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Robinson, thank you very much for coming to talk to us. It is a whole lot easier to talk to all of us in one space than to go and visit each one, but I know that you've had interaction with many of the councillors in this room. Councillor Strunk, you mentioned, and I know councillor Marks and councillor Hutton have used your services at some of their events. So really want to thank you for explaining what your organisation does and the good work that it does. And it certainly gives us an idea on what you're doing and the positive work that you do out there. The Shrima Council recognises the invaluable role of volunteers, and I know that that is something that you value highly. And we know that volunteers playing an important role in our cultural and community events that take place right across Brisbane every year. So it's through our city's festivals and events, of which many councils support through sponsorship and our festivals funding programme, that we're able to see community groups across Brisbane put on events with the assistance of your type of organisation. So I'd like to mention that our Brisbane's Community and Events Festival are people that I will put you in touch with to make sure that when there are events happening, they can contact you to see if you're available to support. It sounds as if you've been pretty busy up until, up until now, so it's a wonderful thing. And I know, you know, with volunteers and making sure that we're really making, respecting those volunteers and all of the work they do. So very happy to put you in touch with our Creative Communities team to investigate what opportunities exist to promote your services for council events. And again, I'd like to thank you for your presentation here in council today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Billy will show you out. Councillors, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or City Cabinet Chair, any of the standing committees? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last year you announced the inaugural Women in Business Grants, which have proven to be an enormous hit with local female Brisbane business owners. Could you please update the chamber on the outcome of this grant programme, including some of the recently announced recipients?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to councillor Landers for the question. Certainly, the Women in Business Grants are a new initiative of this administration, and it's something that directly came out of feedback with business leaders in Brisbane that we had a series of events here in City Hall to engage with, to understand how they're going, but also how we can help them. Now, it's not, it's not normal for a council or Brisbane City Council to provide grants directly to businesses, but, so we have made a clear decision to go in this direction. And it's all about making sure that we support our female business leaders. Why? Because at the moment, only around 35% of businesses in Brisbane are run by females. And so there's a gap there that needs to be addressed. There is no reason, absolutely no reason why there should not be 50% female business leaders running businesses in this community. They make up, female, female business leaders make up not enough of the business leaders in our community. So we're actively getting out there, supporting them and helping them grow. What this new grant programme does is it targets to some of the early stages as businesses are getting, getting, I guess, into a stage where they're starting to grow, but they need some targeted investment to help them go to the next level. And so what these grants provide is up to $5,000 per business. We had an extraordinary response, councillor Landers, to the opening of grants. We had 466 applications received. Around 250 of those met the guidelines. There were obviously some that put in applications that weren't inside the guidelines. And so it was an extraordinary job that our panel had to narrow down the list to the available funding. There were $250,000 announced as part of this grant programme, and today we confirm the 54 grant recipients that would receive up to $5,000 each. And so it's a great outcome that we'll see that money starting to flow, investment in local businesses led by females. But the other thing I want to see is not only the percentage of female, their businesses grow in Brisbane, but I also want to see young women and girls inspired to go into business as well. And they get inspired by seeing success stories. And there are so many success stories already, and we want to help champion those success stories. Some of the examples that we saw today is JK Kature Designs, a business located at Stones Corner. They previously provided wedding dresses in their Stones Corner shop, and then COVID came along and they received a 70% reduction in business as a result of COVID. Why? Because a lot of weddings were cancelled or postponed, an absolute tragedy of the pandemic. So this business quickly moved to providing locally-made retro dresses, retro clothing. And so they're doing that now. So they've moved, they still do bridal wear, but they've moved into providing retro dresses there at their Stones Corner boutique. And the grant that we provided will help them to buy a machine that will allow them to do embroidery, but also to create lace. So instead of buying lace from another place or even another country, they can make the lace here in Brisbane for their retro dresses. So a great example. Another one is New Day Skins, which is a locally-based female-led company that provides the sun care products, including sun cream, which is targeted to get young people using it. So they use a couple of interesting techniques to make it very attractive, and the fragrances that are included in there are part of that as well. And we saw another interesting business, business called East Forge. And they create a locally brewed tea drink that actually looks and tastes a bit like a beer. So literally, you can sit there and maybe while your friends are having a drink at the pub, you can be having this tea drink, which has next to no calories in it, it's got no alcohol in it, and it is healthy for you. It's got a little bit of caffeine in it. And it's a, it's a great concept, just to, you know, to help people who, they want to be involved in this sort of social aspect of going out to have a few drinks, but they don't actually want a drink.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, right across Brisbane, residents are receiving their February edition of your self-promotional flyer, Living in Brisbane. This is the one that you'll send out 21 million copies of over your term, charging residents $6 million. With each edition, your photo and message on the front cover get more and more political. You are now including campaign-style photos of yourself, and this month you even changed the title of your message to include the words, and I quote, "Why I'm backing." Despite numerous calls from the community and Labor councillors, your politicisation of this official council document has become even more brazen and arrogant. Lord Mayor, you are literally using ratepayers' money to politically promote yourself. Do you have no shame?
Lord Mayor.
In having a sort of chat to my colleagues prior to this meeting, you know, we always asked the question, what do you think the opposition might ask a question on today? And everyone was scratching their head because those guys opposite don't have any agenda. And I said, if they don't have anything else, they'll ask about living in Brisbane. There we go. I wish I had put money on that. But the fascinating thing here is that these councillors in the Labor team either have conveniently forgotten history on this matter, or they have chosen to ignore it. Now, what they continue to say, once again, because they have no real agenda, no plans for this city, and they just want to have a campaign of smear and fear continually, they have forgotten that it was them that introduced living in Brisbane. Them. When they were in administration. And in fact, it was councillor Cassidy's mentor, Jim Sawley, who introduced living in Brisbane. Now, there's a suggestion that this has somehow been politicised. Now, I'd like to address that suggestion because I actually asked my team to go back and check, well, has living in Brisbane in any way been politicised? And they came back and they said, yes, the Labor Party politicised it, but we don't. Now, Exhibit A, Living in Brisbane, when Labor Lord Mayor Tim Quinn was in office here. Now, at the moment, you'll see there's a message from the Lord Mayor on the front. Now, that's, that's, you know, one of those things that's been going on for many years. But no, Labor didn't do that. What they did is they put politicians all the way through this publication. And in fact, this one has 16 mentions of Labor Lord Mayor Tim Quinn in it. 16 mentions. And not only that, they mentioned other Labor councillors in here as well. So yes, Living in Brisbane has been politicised. It was politicised by the Labor Party. We don't do that. We do not do that. Councillors, councillors, LMP councillors other than myself as the elected Lord Mayor, do not appear in Living in Brisbane. Yet under Labor, you'd have councillor Hinchcliffe quoted. And basically, what they used to do is get their political media releases, cut and paste it and put it straight into Living in Brisbane, word for word, including said councillor Hinchcliffe, full stop, or said councillor Quinn. So 16 mentions, but, you know, look, this one was just the start. I have another one, Living in Brisbane. It mentions, there's 22 mentions of councillors, including Tim Quinn, Maureen Hayes, John Campbell and Kerry Ray, all Labor councillors, being blatantly promoted here in Living in Brisbane, something that they now say is outrageous and they're against. Does anyone see the hypocrisy here? It's absolutely outrageous. And so this one mentions Tim Quinn, even though he wasn't even the Lord Mayor at the time. It says Deputy Mayor and Urban Planning Committee Chair councillor Quinn said blah, blah, blah. Exhibit three, another one, 14 mentions of Labor councillors, including David Hinchcliffe, Tim Quinn and Jim Sawley. So yes, Living in Brisbane has been politicised by the Labor Party in the past, but we don't do that. We talk about, we talk about the agenda that we are running to build a better Brisbane, but we don't politicise it, we don't mention LMP councillors in there. And if you for a second think that it is inappropriate for the Lord Mayor, the leader of this city, elected by the people, to appear once in the newsletter, then you are a hypocrite. You are a hypocrite because it was okay for 16 mentions of Labor councillors, 14 mentions, 22 mentions of Labor councillors in the past, but it's suddenly not okay for one mention of the Lord Mayor. One mention. What's going on here? What's going on here? They've got nothing. They literally have nothing. If this is the biggest issue to them, they've got nothing. No plans for this city, no agenda. They've just got smear and fear and misrepresentation.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, with Valentine's Day now over for another year, could you please update the chamber on how the Shrima Council is getting our loved ones home sooner and safer through our SAM sign initiative and road safety upgrades?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I thank councillor Toomey. I'm sure, I'm sure you and I and all the councillors recognise that councillor Toomey is the biggest romantic in this place. And he, and that's obviously why this question was, why he raised this question with us today. Yesterday was Valentine's Day, and I hope all councillors did have a wonderful Valentine's Day. And I just want to make sure that everybody took a moment to see the Valentine SAM sign. Now, we change the SAM sign imagery from time to time to make sure that it remains a point of interest for people, so that they are reminded to keep, to keep to the speed limit. That is the objective. The SAM sign, in many ways, is a tool used to remind drivers in a courteous manner to maintain the speed limit in that particular street. It's not okay for motorists to flirt with danger against these Valentine's Day signs. And it's important that particularly at this time of year, don't be a heartbreaker, stick to the speed limit. So, but in all seriousness, we have the Valentine's Day one, we will soon be seeing an Easter one. And it's a way of making sure that motorists continue to pay attention to what has been, at this point, a long-running and successful programme. The Shrima Council's investment in SAM signs means that over half of speeding drivers drop their speeds to the sign limit, making our streets safer for all road users, whether they be motorists, cyclists or pedestrians. Our council is taking action to reduce road congestion and to make it a safe city across all suburbs. The $719,000 in the 2021, excuse me, 2122 financial year to deliver 30 permanent SLO for SAM signs for schools specifically. So this is a programme that was initiated this term to put up permanent SAM signs or speed awareness monitors at schools to increase safety for schools, for students and families and teachers accessing the schools. Priority sites were identified in all wards. And I, when I was a ward councillor, in my role as a ward councillor, was consulted, and I trust, and I trust that all councillors were consulted to find sites in their own communities to ensure that the priorities of the city were consistent with local community priorities. I know in my own ward that Dawson Parade at Capera was the site of this year's SAM for schools, site for St. William's', which is actually a border street with councillor Toomey. So it's a nice connection there that the two of us have, that the shared SAM signs. I believe councillor Toomey put a SAM sign for Grovelie State School on Dawson Parade last year on his side of the road, and I put one on my side of the road, making a beautiful sort of partnership at this time of year. So thank you councillor Toomey for that. I really appreciate our long-running care of the northwestern suburbs and making schools safer for that area. I have the great pleasure to advise the council that the programme for this financial year, the budgeted programme, has hit its target, that all of the SAM for school signs were in before school returned this year, which is a great thing. Because remember, the objective here is to make these streets safer for people accessing the schools. And that we were able to do it early, or earlier than anticipated, is, I think, something that I'm really quite proud of. And I thank the officers involved in this project and this programme to, for being able to do that. Now, the councillors would know that over some time now, we have had rotating mobile SAM signs that councillors can shift. SAM signs that councillors can shift, can build new locations and shift them around. For those who are interested, there are, across the whole city, 188 movable monitors that rotate across 748 separate locations. And these installations will stay in one place for at least one month, and oftentimes up to six weeks. And they can show, or they do show, that I should say, that of the 68.74 million vehicles who passed by a SAM between May and August of last year, 18.3% of motorists who were speeding when they entered SAM's radar range, and 55.8% of those adjusted their speed to below the speed limit when they were made aware of it. So I'll say that again. Of the motorists on those particular roads, 18.3% were speeding, and of the more than half quickly adjusted their speed merely in response to our signs.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor. Lord Mayor, recently council officers have done the right thing by refusing to support a development application for two 26-storey high-rise towers on a site zone for eight to 12 stories at 297 Montague Road, West End, immediately adjoining Davies Park. The site in question was first proposed to be publicly acquired and amalgamated into Davies Park over 100 years ago. And in council city plan 2000, the site was still identified for acquisition to, and in the trunk infrastructure plan, to cater for growing demand for green space. Your own administration has recognised the chronic shortage of public parkland in West End, and admits that the acquisition of the glass factory site further north in the suburb of South Brisbane won't be enough to rectify this deficit. So now that the proposed development for 297 Montague Road seems unlikely to proceed, will you ask your officers to explore acquiring the site so it can be added to Davies Park?
Lord Mayor.
Mr. Chair, through you to councillor Sri, we are always committed to, wherever possible, expanding green space and parkland, which is what we're doing at Mowbray Park right now. We're absolutely committed to that. That's why we're looking at acquiring the busy site in the future, because there's an opportunity, as part of the Olympic Games opportunity, to have some, a temporary facility there for the Olympics, and then to have a great public outcome in the longer term. We are always looking at opportunities. Now, I'm aware that in the LGIP, so the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, we have proposals for providing more parkland in the area that councillor Sri is talking about. I'm also aware that councillor Sri voted against the LGIP when it came up in this place. What I am also aware of is that as part of the proposal, or at least, I think I'm talking about the same proposal, but as part of the proposal that was refused, there was an inclusion in the plan for something like 4,000 square metres of new parkland to be created as part of that development. And so that would extend the existing land around Davies Park and provide a new connection from Montague Road through to Davies Park. And it's interesting because councillor Sri, you know, he says that the plan says, you know, X number of stories, this was above it, should be refused. But I'm also aware that what was proposed was actually a smaller footprint of development and a higher outcome, so that parkland could be provided back to the community. And so you could have squat fat buildings on the site, or you could have taller, thinner buildings that provide parkland. And so councillor Sri, well councillor Sri says all the whole site. Well, we don't own this site. We don't own this site. It's a private site. And the proposal would have seen 4,000 square metres come across to council without us having to acquire that land.
Councillor, all sides, no objections, please.
And so, when councillor Sri opposes developments in his area that provide new parkland, you have to question how genuine he is about getting more parkland. Because it seems that his only approach to buying park, to getting parkland is that, that ratepayers should have to buy it. Now, if there's another more affordable way of providing it, shouldn't we explore that?
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillor Sri.
Just on relevance, the question was about whether the mayor will ask officers to explore acquiring the entirety of the 10,000 square metre site, not about whether officers should trade off 14 stories of additional height for a small pocket of parkland.
Lord Mayor.
And so, in terms of acquiring land for parkland, we are always looking for opportunities, but it's got to be affordable. And this situation that was proposed, where 4,000 square metres would come across to add to the parkland in the area, was very affordable. It didn't require us spending any ratepayers' money to achieve that outcome. And so, the reality is, we need to look in the best interests of the ratepayers to make the dollar go further. And so, if we can achieve an outcome through the development process, that's a good thing. That is a good thing. It's like the Greens Party's fanciful claims about the ABC site. Oh, just, you know, find the money and buy it. Never mind that the Labor Rudd government sold the site off, and it's more than doubled in value since then. And I think that's probably an underestimation. Went from, I think, 20 million now to 43.512 months ago. And what's happened in the last 12 months? Massive property boom. Yet, oh, we should just magically find all of this money to buy a site. That was sold off by the Labor government. That was already owned by the public. We opposed the sale of the site in the first place. Now the Greens want us to spend a massive amount, 40, 50, 60 million dollars, to buy land that was once owned by the government. And so, you know, when you start talking about money, Greens, MPs and councillors, their eyes sort of just glaze over. They're just like, oh, taxpayers can pay. Ratepayers can pay. It's, you know, like, there's money. There's money here, there's money there. There is no magic pudding here. And so, we strive to make ratepayers' dollars go further. And we do that by, wherever possible, achieving great infrastructure and green space outcomes through the development assessment process.
Lord Mayor.
We'll continue to do so.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Cabinet Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrinna Council is transforming the Oxley Creek Corridor into a world-class, sustainable leisure destination. With Warral Parkland's upgrade completed last year, can you please update the chamber on what will be next as part of the Oxley Creek Transformation Project?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Mackay for the question. Mr. Chair, Oxley Creek is our largest creek catchment, spanning approximately 70 kilometres across three local government areas. It is also one of our most important waterway bodies, being the longest creek and only sand-based creek in the city. Unfortunately, it has bordered on industrial land and has become one of our most urbanised waterways. The LMP administration recognised this, and in 2016 announced that the Brisbane City Council would be supporting the transformation of Oxley Creek from the Brisbane River to Larapinta. And as part of this announcement, we committed to investing $100 million over 20 years to transform the 20-kilometre corridor into a world-class lifestyle and leisure destination. A key focus of this commitment was to improve the land around Oxley Creek to increase the biodiversity and ecological values of the catchment. Since then, there has been significant progress within the Oxley Creek Transformation Project. In 2018, council released the Oxley Creek Master Plan, which identified six priority projects. These projects focused on delivering new recreational opportunities as well as improving the environmental outcomes. Last year, we finished the Warral Parkland's upgrade, which provided a nature-based adventure playground. This playground is a great space to engage and educate children on our natural environment, not only through the nature-based playground, but through the Warral Parkland Discovery Trail and the Oxley Creek Junior Ranger Programme. The Discovery Trail features 11 stops and include activities and challenges that teach children about the environment around them. And as part of the Oxley Creek Junior Ranger Programme, kids can then complete a quiz about what they learnt on the Discovery Trail. These two programmes ensure that at the heart of everything we do in this space, the environment is our key focus. Some of our environmental projects include partnering with Oxley Creek Catchment Association and Ocean Crusaders to support their waterway clean-up initiative. Last year, this saw 343 kilograms of rubbish removed from the creek and creek banks. We've also partnered with Resilient Rivers and Logan City Council to investigate and identify solutions to address erosion issues at Larapinta. Mr. Chair, we also entered into a cultural heritage management agreement with the Yugra Yagapul people to ensure future projects are sensitive to cultural heritage. This is a very important step in recognising the traditional owners and to the ongoing maintenance of the site. One of the priority projects in this master plan was to transform 150 hectares of wetlands in Archerfield into an ecological parkland. We released the Archerfield Wetlands Precinct Plan in 2019, which outlined the plan for rehabilitating the Old Enala Waste Treatment Plant into a district-scale parkland. The parkland will provide something for all ages and interests, from a youth hub to an adventure playground for our younger kids. It will also provide facilities for Oxley Creek Catchment Association, to event and performance spaces, as well as ensuring environmental restoration and rehabilitation of the catchment. Later this year, we will see the completion of the three-kilometre Archerfield Wetlands Discovery Trail, allowing the community to access and enjoy this site. The introduction of the shared path will improve access through the wetlands, which allows for vegetation management and future restoration works to occur. Mr. Chair, as I've already mentioned, the key focus of this project is improving the ecological outcomes for Oxley Creek. A water quality monitoring is key to achieving this objective. We have commenced monthly water quality monitoring to gain a better understanding of the water quality of the creek. This is incredibly important because by improving the waterway health in Oxley Creek, we will also see benefits in the Brisbane River and through to Moreton Bay. As for what is next, councillor Johnson, you'll be pleased to know the Graceville Riverside Precinct Plan is finalised and will be released tomorrow. Graceville Riverside Park will be the third precinct plan that has been born out of the Oxley Creek Transformation Master Plan. As the entrance to point to Oxley Creek from the Brisbane River, the key focus for this area is supporting the existing community facilities and recreational activities in this space. In the short term, the focus will be on upgrading the existing parkland facilities and to provide new playground and outdoor gym equipment. In the longer term, we want to be able to support the existing water-based recreational facilities by upgrading community facilities and water access. This plan has been the result of significant community input, with more than 750 people providing feedback on the draft plan in late 2020. Mr. Chair, we've come a long way in our vision for Oxley Creek, but there's still much more to do, and I look forward to working with BSA to roll out more.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's becoming increasingly obvious that you have decided to rename the Brisbane City Council after yourself. No longer do you and your LMP administration refer to this organisation as Brisbane City Council, you call it the Shrinna Council. Residents are becoming more and more concerned with this narcissistic behaviour. One resident wrote in a local newspaper, and I quote, 'Your assumption of ownership of our council seems like immodest self-aggrandizement. Please give Brisbane City Council its proper name and status.' The quote ends there. Brisbane City Council has existed since 1925, and it's always been called that, Brisbane City Council, but, Lord Mayor, you just can't help yourself. It's not enough to name a group of LMP councillors after yourself as Team Shrinna. You go bigger and name the whole council after yourself. This egotistical decision makes it very clear that you are purely in it for yourself and not for the people of Brisbane. Lord Mayor, yes or no, do you think residents appreciate your arrogance?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We see, once again, a complete misunderstanding of how democracy actually works. The Brisbane City Council, we actually had this discussion in the chamber last year. What is the council? What is the council? Not what I think the council is. What does the law, what does the City of Brisbane Act say the council is? It is the elected group of councillors. The elected group of councillors. That is the council. The council is not some nameless nebulous organisation. The council is the elected group of councillors. Now, I didn't write the law. I didn't write the City of Brisbane Act. In fact, the Labor government wrote the City of Brisbane Act, and they continue to meddle and change the City of Brisbane Act. But one thing they didn't change was the fact that the council, the Brisbane City Council, is an elected democratic organisation. Now, forever and a day, the administration, the elected government of the council was known as the administration. So the Newman administration, the Sawley administration, the Quirk administration. We have deliberately changed it, because we're not here to administer. We are here to build a better Brisbane. We are here not to administer. We're not administrators. We're here to have a vision for the city and to build a better Brisbane. And so...
Councillor Strunk, please.
I'm not going to refer to my colleagues as administrators, because they're not. We are not administrators, we're builders. We are not administrators, we're visionaries. We have a vision and a plan for the city of Brisbane. And so, just like, just like up the road is the Palache government. Why? Because that's the elected government. That's the elected government. Why is it called the Morrison government? Because that's the elected government. We are the elected council. Now, we didn't elect ourselves, the people of Brisbane put us here. So if you have an issue with this councillor Cassidy, take it up with the people of Brisbane. And the good thing about democracy...
Councillor Cassidy, please.
A couple, a couple of Labor operatives have taken objection to this, and a couple of Green operatives have taken objection to this. The reality is, we are the elected council. The council is the group of councillors that run the show. And if councillor Cassidy can't get his head around this simple thing, he probably shouldn't be in the role that he's in. Probably shouldn't be the so-called leader of the opposition if he can't get a basic thing like this right. Now, I see time and time again councillor Cassidy refers to the Queensland government as the Palache government. Why does he do that? Why does he do that? He even refers to the Morrison government as the Morrison government. Yet, the Shrinna Council, he somehow takes objection to that, because...
Please, councillor Cassidy, please.
What's the difference between the three? What's the difference between the three? They're all elected. They all run a government. There's all a government and an opposition in each case. There is no difference. No difference whatsoever. And if councillor Cassidy takes objection to this, his objection is purely political. It's a cynical political one, which motivates pretty much everything he does and says. And so, like I said, I don't know why it's okay to refer to the state government as the Palache government, but using the same thing here is suddenly unacceptable. Why? It's politics. With councillor Cassidy and his colleagues, politics always comes first. They're, I guess their loyalty to the team, you know, is, is rock solid. But in this case, it is causing them to have a bit of blurred vision, because they're somehow okay with something happening just up the road, but they think it is completely unacceptable here. I say again, we are not administrators. We are not an administration. We are a government that governs for the best interests of the people of Brisbane. We are the elected council, and we never lose sight each and every day of why we're here. That's to make Brisbane better for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you mark him? Did you mark him?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the acting chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Owen. Councillor Owen, with Brisbane Schools welcoming students back to the classroom, could you please update the chamber on Shrinna Council, Shrinna Council, Shrinna Council's Safe Path to School Programme is encouraging active and safer travel for Brisbane School colours.
Thank you. Councillor Owen. Thank you, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Huang for the question. And certainly, it is a pleasure to be able to get up here today and talk about the Shrinna Council's delivery on the safe... Council's delivery on the safer paths to school. As Brisbane students have been getting back to school in the past week or so, the Shrinna Council has been working very hard to make sure that the trip to and from school is a safe and easy one. And can I say to my fellow Shrinna Council team member, Councillor Wines, thank you for your efforts through your portfolio area to your officers who have been working hard on the delivery of these programmes. We are incredibly proud, as part of the Shrinna Council, of the Safer Path to School Programme right across the city of Brisbane, as it builds missing footpath links and wider footpaths near schools to ensure students, parents, carers and teachers can travel to and from school on safe and connected footpaths. Since the programme began in 2019, over nine kilometres of new footpaths have been constructed. And over the summer season, we have seen more footpaths built, ready to welcome students in this new school year. So over December 2021 and January 2022, eight new Safer Paths to Schools programmes, projects were completed. Now, I do know that Councillor Mackay would have received very good feedback from the upgrade on Jesmond Road for Fig Tree Pocket State School. And I know that you were certainly out there on the first week of school, Councillor Mackay, and talking to your residents out there as you regularly do. I also know that the feedback from Councillor Landers has been that the Sophie Crescent for Norris Road State School has been well-received in her local community. Now, Councillor Wines, over at Mitchelton, Our Lady of Delors Catholic Primary School has also benefited from a new footpath. And over in Rossmore Avenue in Cooperoo for Our Lady of Mount Carmel Primary School, I know that Councillor Cunningham has been getting positive feedback from her residents. And whilst I've acknowledged some of the team members of the Shrinna Council on this side of the chamber, I do point to the fact that Seven Hills State School has also had 130 metres of extra footpath installed, which is in the Morningside Ward. And on the north side as well, we know that Councillors Hammond and Davis's community will certainly appreciate the two upgrades in Stafford Heights, in Remick Street for the Queen of Apostles, and also Pangaea Street for Somerset Hills State School. So they've certainly gone quite well. And whilst I'm sure I will never hear a good job Shrinna Council come out of this councillor's mouth, Councillor Johnston's community will be benefiting from a new footpath, or is going to benefit from the new footpath which has been installed on Waratah Avenue for Graceville State School, which was finished in December. But that's not all, as we often hear that line, but wait, there's more. So they were the eight footpaths that were just completed over the Christmas school holidays. And so this entire financial year, there have been another six footpaths that have been constructed. And I know that Councillor Adaman is a great advocate for the one in Ironbark Road, Chapel Hill, at Chapel Hill State School, and Councillor Matic on Bramble Terrace at Red Hill for Ethica Creek State School, and Councillor Hutton in Cobhead Street, Ginder Lee, for Ginder Lee State School. And also Deputy Mayor over at St Joachim's Catholic Primary School in Yuletide Street, Holland Park West, and Councillor Alamon, Hume Street, Virginia, for Virginia State School. But also, over in Salisbury, at Salisbury State School, in Massinger Street, Nella Street and Ged Street, in Councillor Griffith's area, that's another one that was finished this financial year. So this programme not only fixes missing links, it creates a safer environment, supports active school travel, reduces traffic and parking congestion at school gates, and promotes improved health outcomes. This kind of infrastructure is delivered alongside our active school travel programme and helps to make the trip to school safer without the need of a car. So as many councillors...
Thank you, Councillor Owen. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My question is directed to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last year, Labor councillors revealed to you that one of your LMP councillors was using residents' money for personal development courses. Councillor Peter Matic charged residents $1,925 for a course at a company that specialises in neuro-linguistic programming, or NLP. According to some, NLP is a psychological approach that involves analysing strategic use by successful individuals and applying them to reach a personal goal. Lord Mayor, you've had more than enough time to conduct an investigation into the use of Brisbane ratepayers' money and form a position on it. Yes or no, do you think the LMP councillors paying for personal development courses in neuro-linguistic programming is a good use of residents' money?
Lord Mayor.
Look, there's a really simple answer to that question, and that is, no one is allowed to pay for personal development courses using ratepayers' money. They can pay for professional development courses. And I would simply say that I certainly hope that no Labor councillors are taking the opportunity up to pay for courses from their ward budget, or from their budget that's been provided using ratepayers' money. I certainly hope that, you know, the leader of the opposition or any of the other Labor councillors aren't using ratepayers' money for professional development courses in the same way that they're criticising this side of the chamber for. So, look, I'm happy to look into that, to see whether any Labor councillors have taken up the opportunity to do professional development courses, because they obviously have an issue with it. But the reality is, as I said, there is no money available for personal development courses, there are funds available for professional development courses. Now, that is the same as for many people in this council organisation, and in fact, many people right across state government, business. It is the case that people, organisations invest in their people for their professional development. Why? Because it helps their people grow and learn and become better at their jobs. And so I think that is a perfectly reasonable thing for council to do, to make sure that its leaders, the council, the elected councillors, can have some professional development. And so I am very enthusiastic about councillors increasing their skills. I would suggest that there are some courses in financial management that the leader of the opposition could take advantage of, in, you know, sort of understanding budgets, in, you know, I guess, making sure that they can read balance sheets all right and understand what they see in front of them when the quarterly financial statements and budget reviews come through. There are courses that you can do in that, and obviously it is a need on the opposite side of the chamber. So I would encourage councillors to continue making, or taking up the opportunity to do professional development. It is good that we all grow our skills, but certainly there are no funds available for personal development.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. That ends question time. We now move on to consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee Report, 7th February 2022.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 7th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 7th February 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Last night, the City Hall, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge and the Tropical Dome and Radcliffe Place were all lit up in red to support Sweetheart Day, obviously coinciding with Valentine's Day. Sweetheart Day is Australia's Awareness Day for children impacted by heart disease. Regrettably, it is one of the largest causes of infant death in the country. Tonight, all of the same assets will be lit red again, but for a different reason. Many of you would be aware that it marks the 80th anniversary of the fall of Singapore in the Second World War, and obviously that was a, I guess, a pivotal point in the Second World War, which was a shock and a tragedy to many people. Many people lost their lives, many people were taken prisoner of war as a result of that. And so it is appropriate that we acknowledge that important anniversary 80 years ago, and the many people that lost their lives, and many people that fought for freedom. And ultimately, to be grateful that the nation of Singapore has risen again and is now one of the leading nations in Asia, and in fact the world when it comes to their growth over so many decades, and delivering such great high standards of living for their people, and also a strong defence force which hopefully will make sure that we never see the fall of Singapore again. On Wednesday or tomorrow night, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in blue to support International Angelman Day. And Angelman Syndrome is a neurogenic, neurogenetic disorder that results in intellectual and developmental delay. It affects around 1 in 20,000 people, and those with Angelman Syndrome typically are non-speakers or speak only with a few limited words. They also have mobility and balance impairments, but they're also known for their tremendously happy personalities and positive nature. And obviously, I think for many of us, it's one of the first times we've been hearing about this syndrome, and that is exactly why we light up the assets for this reason, so we can bring community awareness to so many good organisations and causes. This coming Saturday will mark two years to the day that Hannah Clark and her three beautiful children, Aaliyah, Leana and Trey, had their lives taken by one of the most shocking acts of domestic violence and crimes that we have all witnessed in our lifetimes. And through Small Steps for Hannah, the charity that was formed out of that tragedy, we've seen already some really positive progress made, particularly when it comes to the matter of coercive control, with now that fight being taken up with the state government and getting the support of the state government, which has been fantastic, to really help address some of those issues that were linked not only to the death of Hannah and her three children, but also that so many other women have suffered through, and so many other people in domestic violence situations. And so I did want to acknowledge that Councillor Cunningham is the director of Small Steps for Hannah and is actively supporting the great work of that organisation, and that the lady meris, Nina, is also their patron. And we want to acknowledge the work that has been done there and the progress that is made. Obviously, we'd all like to see more progress and faster progress, but this Saturday marks the two-year anniversary of that tragedy, and we'll be lighting up all of our assets in pink to acknowledge that particular day and rededicate ourselves to making sure that we stop things like that happening in the future so that we can all live safe in this community, and particularly, women can live safe from domestic violence. Last Sunday, the 13th of February, was the 14th anniversary of the National Apology to the Stolen Generations. And it's a fact of Australian history that so many Indigenous Australians suffered greatly from early government policies which implemented the forced removal of Indigenous children from their families. And there can be very few things that are more traumatic than having children removed forcibly from their families. And so it was right and just that as a nation and also the government apologised, and it's now 14 years since that occurred. Obviously, that was a dark chapter of our history, but one that is important that we remember each day, each year, and once again reminds us that sometimes even policies that may have in some ways been well-intentioned can have drastic and tragic impacts, and this was one of them. The journey to apology began with the Bringing Them Home Report, which had a number of findings from an inquiry from the Human Rights and Equal Opportunity Commission in 1995. On a more positive note, yesterday, Councillor Howard marked the 10th anniversary of the Brisbane Greeter Programme. And so we celebrated last night, we came together on Valentine's Day with more than 60 Brisbane Greeters to thank them for their service to our city and to encourage them for many more years to come with the fantastic Brisbane Greeters Programme. I'm proud to have brought Brisbane Greeters on board inside Brisbane City Council now on a permanent basis. When they first started, they were part of Brisbane Marketing, which...
Councillor Johnston.
When they first started, they were part of Brisbane Marketing, which is obviously our economic development agency, but now going forward, they will continue to be part of Brisbane City Council. We got to acknowledge last night four amazing women who were there on day one, the very first Brisbane Greeters who are still greeting today, and it was great to be able to present them with a special commemorative badge for their 10 years of service. At the moment, we have 114 volunteer greeters who do a great job. I mentioned last night that if you have a look at some of the reviews of the greeters, like for example on TripAdvisor, people are so grateful for the work that they do. They have earned the honour and respect, not only of tourists coming to our city, but in more recent times, as we've sort of geared back up again in recent times, local Brisbane residents have been taking up the opportunity to go on greeter tours. And local Brisbane residents have appreciated learning more about their city. They may have been born here or lived here a long time, but there is always more to learn. And it's interesting to see that one of the most popular tour destinations is the Walter-Taylor Bridge, Councillor Mackay, Councillor Johnston. People absolutely love to go and see that bit of Brisbane's unique history, and there are many great tours across the city that will reveal fascinating things about our wonderful city, and these volunteers are an absolute wealth of information and knowledge. But most importantly, they're passionate about Brisbane and they love Brisbane. So thank you to all of the Brisbane Greeters who have served us for the last 10 years, and particularly those who started on day one and are still going. Item A in front of us is the amendment to the Significant Contracting Plan for the construction of the Breakfast Creek Bridge, and also the Loris Bonney Riverwalk Extension. This project is effectively, well achieves two things, provides new creek crossing across Breakfast Creek for the growing number of pedestrians and cyclists going through the area, but it also provides a much-needed extension of the Loris Bonney Riverwalk through a, quite a narrow section there that needs to be upgraded to provide for the volume of people that go through there each day. What this SCP change does, it's very simple. When we first went out to tender, or when we first went out with the SCP, sorry, not out to tender, but when we first brought the SCP through to council, there was a 20% loading added for local benefits. We have brought this amendment through to add a 30% loading for local benefits, which is our maximum loading for local benefits in the procurement policy that we have. So we're really making sure that we give every opportunity and benefit to get local tenders with local people working on the jobs and providing those local benefits. So that is the only change that we're bringing through here, increasing the local benefits weighting from 20% to 30%.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Moved and extended.
We have a motion for the extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
And so this approval today, assuming the council supports it, will bring into effect that 30% weighting or benefit for those local benefits. We obviously want to get on with the construction of this project, which will gear up in the coming months. We're expecting a tender will be awarded very soon based on this 30% weighting, and then construction will happen in the coming months and it'll kick off. Obviously, the Breakfast Creek Greenbridge, the... Obviously, the Breakfast Creek Greenbridge, the second of our two green bridges that are underway at the moment, with Kangaroo Point Greenbridge under construction at the moment, with work sites established and a lot of work going on. Item B is the Stores Board submission for the Significant Contracting Plan for the Construction of the Beams Road Upgrade, Lacey Road to Hanford Road, Stage One, with an option for Stage Two as well. And this is a really important upgrade. Now, there's been a lot of discussions about the Beams Road Open Level Crossing, which obviously we've committed forty million dollars towards, and we're seeing other levels of government involved in that project as well. But what this one is, is making sure that we get a corridor upgrade, and that is really important, this is a busy corridor. There are sections in the past that have been upgraded, but then there are clearly substandard sections that aren't designed to cope with the volume of people that go through there every day. And so like all road and infrastructure upgrades, this will also provide upgraded safety and upgraded cyclists and pedestrian facilities, and deliver a good safety outcome as well as allowing for increasing capacity. The total cost of this project is seventy-three million. Stage One works are due to start in the middle of the year. Stage One includes an upgrade from Hanford Road through to Tallemore Street, and also the shared footpath and pathway and public utility upgrades to Lacey Road as well. The SCP also allows council the option of pushing ahead with Stage Two, if the budget allows us to do that at the end of Stage One. So touch wood, we can get more out of this, we certainly intend to do so. Council and this, this team is only able to deliver this upgrade thanks to the support of the Morrison Government. The Morrison Government. And it's interesting, even, even the opposition calls it the Morrison Government, but thanks to the Morrison Government, we're able to invest into this.
Councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Johnston.
We have the legal and constitutional expert making commentary. So we've had strong advocacy from the local federal MP, Luke Howard, who has delivered a fifty million dollar contribution through the Morrison Government to help us get on with this project. Obviously, the budget I mentioned before was seventy-three million, with fifty million coming from the Morrison Government. So keen to get on with this particular project, just as we are keen to continue supporting the Beams Road Open Level Crossing Upgrade, which I mentioned, we've committed forty million dollars towards. Item C is the Contracts and Tendering Report for December twenty twenty-one. Twenty-two out of twenty-four contracts have been awarded to businesses within our local region of Brisbane and South East Queensland. That's ninety-one point six percent. So great local benefits once again, and once again exceeding our eighty percent target that we committed to in the local buy procurement policy. So far in this financial year, three hundred and ninety out of four hundred and two contracts have been awarded to businesses within Brisbane or South East Queensland, which is ninety-seven percent, and a spend of five hundred and thirty million dollars so far in the current financial year. Notable contracts in this particular month include the Rochedale and Priestdale Road Intersection Upgrade, a fantastic project being funded jointly by the Morrison Government, our council, and also Logan City Council as well. The Power Council, I'll call it, the Power, the Power Council. And so they've come on board as well, and we've also seen the ongoing contract with Maltana, who do a fantastic job. It's a social enterprise employing Indigenous, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders to help clean our buses in these pandemic conditions where cleanliness is next to godliness, and so we see that work continuing among with many other contracts. So I commend these three items to the chamber. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on all of these, and with your indulgence to say a couple of words in support of the Lord Mayor's acknowledgement of the anniversary of the apology to the stolen generations, it certainly was a seminal moment, as Linda Burney said in Parliament, it was a marker along the way, certainly not an outcome. I would, I would disagree with the Lord Mayor and say that those, those policies were not well-intentioned at the time, they were designed to do exactly what they did, and they were bad, and children today are still being taken from their parents, their pain has not ended, and we have plenty more work to do. On ENC, Chair, I'll speak on all these items, just ask that item C be taken, seriatum for voting, please.
C, seriatum for voting, yep.
Thank you. So in terms of clause A, the Stores Board Submission, the Lord Mayor has just glossed over a massive error in awarding this contract, which is supposed to be awarded, I think, next month, March twenty twenty-two. All those tenders have been spending the last few months putting their tenders together based on a certain set of criteria that were provided by this LMP administration. This LMP administration put that tender out and said, you have to fulfil a twenty percent, a twenty percent local buy content, even though at the time, even though at the time the policy said it could be up to thirty percent, but this LMP administration headed by this LMP mayor said, no, 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 we'll just do twenty percent on the local buy, and at the last minute, at the last minute, they could have fixed this up months and months and months ago, but at the last minute, somebody, I assume in the bureaucracy, bureaucracy has said, the policy's now updated and it has to be a minimum of thirty percent. It has to be a minimum of thirty percent. So now we have all these tenders who have been spending months putting their, putting their bids together at the last minute, are having the goalposts changed. Now, we don't oppose the thirty percent local buy content, the thirty percent local weighting, of course, but this is just another example of how poorly planned and poorly managed these projects are under this current LMP mayor. We saw that on Kingston Smith Drive, how poorly planned that was, how hollowed-out council's engineering capability was at the time to identify all of these issues that emerged, which blew that out by twelve months, and by some estimates, hundreds of millions of dollars on what that should have cost to construct. And here we have again, eighteen months after this was, this was announced, changing the goalposts just one month or less before these tenders are supposed to be awarded. So this eighty-metre bridge, this little tiny bridge that's costing two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars per metre, with the most expensive, the most expensive bike way this council, this Brisbane City Council has ever constructed. And because of this LMP mayor's failure to get the scope of that contract right, Chair, we are now at risk of seeing a Kingston Smith Drive two-point-oh. So this is the extension of the bike way along Kingston Smith Drive, we saw that was poorly planned, poorly managed, had cost blowouts and delays. We're already seeing the goalposts being shifted in these tender documents, one month out from them being awarded, and all these tenders, I'm sure from today, will be scrambling to make sure that they can meet those requirements. And I'm sure that the person who's going to be left with egg on their face is of course going to be this LMP mayor, Adrian Schrinner. Clause B, Chair, is the contracting plan for the Beams Road Upgrade, Stage One of it anyway. Now, it mentions that there are risks, there are significant risks throughout this, but the highest risk, the highest risk, of course, is this project working in with the adjacent Beams Road Open Level Crossing Upgrade that the state government's undertaking. Now, this is the overpass, the overpass project that this Lord Mayor was trying to team up with the federal member for Petrie and delay and play political games last year with by putting in place, putting in place so much red tape and unreasonable conditions on that project proceeding, which would have seen, would have seen the approaches have to be extended by two hundred metres in each direction, which weren't to Australian standards. So, so we know that what that risk to that project interfacing with this project is, is this Lord Mayor. The state government even tried to hand the project over to council, if they had so many issues, they would hand over all of the money, and council could seamlessly manage both of these projects in one, so there wouldn't be this higher risk of interface. But of course, the Lord Mayor identified at the time that would remove, remove an issue that he could play politics on, so he didn't want that. Of course, he didn't want to actually get a good outcome when it comes to the Beams Road Open Level Crossing, he saw the political opportunity there, and he refused that offer to take on that project and deliver it fully funded from the Morrison Parliament and the Palashay Parliament. Oh, I'm sorry, government and administration, it's a bit confusing in here these days, Chair, about those terms. So of course, Chair, of course, the highest risk should be written in there, Adrian Schrinner in bold, when it comes to the delivery of this project. Now clause C, the Lord Mayor has just crowed that, I think he said something like ninety-one percent of these, these contracts are going to local companies. I'm sure, I'm sure his comments, he thought were, were accurate, but I'm not sure if he's drilling down into the details of these companies being awarded these contracts very much. Of course, these decisions are being made by delegates, and ENC is just rubber-stamping them, but it does take leadership from a Lord Mayor of a city to give direction to how these contracts are awarded, and to make sure they actually are delivering good value for money for rate payers.
Councillor, please, no interjecting. Please continue, Councillor.
Thanks very much, Chair. So what we, what we see here is nine million dollars in road resurfacing, that's basic council work. Used to be a case where, used to be a case where we would have LMP Lord Mayors at least, at least make platitudes to say where there's ongoing council work, they would try and ensure there was ongoing council workers to do it, but we know that the propensity of this current LMP Lord Mayor, Adrian Schrinner, is to, is to contract out as much as he can and get as much temporary labour hire workforce in to make sure he divides our workforce. So we've got other basics as well, like landscaping being contracted out. So not only is this LMP mayor not supporting secure jobs during this economic recovery, Chair, he's also not supporting local jobs. The first contract in this list for parking management infrastructure has been awarded to a company based in Austria, not Australia, he might have misread that, it's based in Austria, that two-point-nine million dollar contract. The Manibbi Bike Way contract has been given to a Sydney-based company, at least in Australia, certainly not in Brisbane or South East Queensland. There's a playground contract to a company based in Melbourne, we see the LMP sourcing cremation units from a UK-based organisation, and contracts for electronic road signage have been contracted to companies in Melbourne and New South Wales. So maybe perhaps some of these companies have a shop front, or, or someone, one person that works somewhere in Brisbane, a P O box in Brisbane perhaps, which is how the Lord Mayor tries to pump up his numbers a little bit to say ninety-one percent of these contracts are delivered to local companies. But it doesn't take you very long, Chair, to go through and find enormous amounts of money that are being shipped overseas or interstate and not supporting local jobs at all. Contract thirteen is to test the safety of the Brisbane Metro vehicles, more than three hundred thousand dollars is being paid to QFES to make sure these overseas buses are up to Australian standards. Just imagine if those sixty electric buses were being built right here in Brisbane, supporting local workers rather than workers in Europe, we of course would be manufacturing them to Australian standards instead of hoping that someone is, and then outlaying all this money to make sure that they are appropriately tested once they get here. So you certainly wouldn't need that three hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is just appalling, appalling management once again from this LMP Lord Mayor. And, and this is all, of course, we must remember, Chair, because this LMP mayor, Adrian Schrinner, wanted these buses to look a bit like trams. We could have had locally-made buses. They were demanded, that you couldn't tender, you couldn't tender for this project unless you made these buses look like trams, and now we are seeing those jobs shipped over, overseas, we see councillor Owen very happy about that, very happy that those jobs are being supported in Switzerland rather than here in Brisbane. She was talking this morning in the committee about how great it is that, that those buses are being shipped currently, and they're, they're somewhere off the coast of France, she was bragging about, instead of just off the coast of the port of Brisbane, or on the coast of the port of Brisbane, out at Eagle Farm, Chair, in your ward, I believe, you would have been supporting jobs in your ward if we had some decent leadership in this city. Another contract for a major cost blowout, the Interprely Roundabouts on there, thanks to this LMP administration that have failed to keep that project under budget, there's a sixty million dollar cost blowout before work has even started.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Move a extension, seconded. Extension of time for the leader of the opposition has been moved by councillor Strunk and councillor Griffith. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Thanks very much, thanks very much, Chair. And just one more, just one more, this won't take very long, and that's the Mowbray Park Lighting Contract, of course. So the LMP here are spending two hundred thousand dollars on a creative lighting project at Mowbray Park, but are refusing to put any money towards upgrading the community facilities there. In fact, what they are doing, Chair, of course, is bulldozing the East Brisbane Bowls Club, which right now, today, is being used as a cultural hub for hundreds of young creatives and musicians, and what that is going to be replaced with is a bitumen car park. So for weeks we've had, for weeks and weeks, we've had the Lord Mayor saying that he's very proud to be bulldozing the former East Brisbane Bowls Club site because he's gonna, he's gonna make a whole lot of new parkland in its place, but what, what in fact it is is a car park. And all the people, all the people of that community get instead of a council, a Brisbane City Council that is interested and invested in their community and providing community spaces, is some nice lights for them to look at when they park their car in that bitumen car park. I think that is an absolute insult to those residents in that part of the community who are fighting to save that community facility from the LMP's bulldozers, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise to speak on items A and C in today's report, and can I start by just providing some facts that certainly the leader of the opposition has twisted? Because yes, there has been a tender process, but let me make it extremely clear that the tenders have been working with a provisional local buy weighting of thirty percent as approved by the Project Finalisation Committee, and this was used in the engagement with tenders through both the EOI and the R F T processes. So the request for tender process closed in December twenty twenty-one, but before that, the expressions of interest opened on the fourteenth of September and closed on the ninth of October. And so the actual local buy weighting of thirty percent was communicated way back then. So for the leader of the opposition to get up here today and claim that this is changing the goalpost at the last minute is false, absolutely false. So, Mr Chair, on this side of the chamber, the Schrinner Council is actually getting on with the job of delivering the Breakfast Creek Greenbridge. And last week, when we considered this amendment to the Significant Contract Plan, it was about bringing the SCP in line with the local buy policy that we have implemented right across council. So I don't know why the leader of the opposition is suddenly getting up and having a big complaint against local buy and, and us factoring it into these tender processes. It begs to, it beggars relief.
Councillor Strunk, please.
And I know that every time I'm telling the truth over this side, they don't like it on the other side, and that's why they keep interjecting. So the Breakfast Creek Greenbridge is an important link, and it not only extends the Loris Bonney Riverwalk and the Kingston Smith Drive Upgrade, but it also will be an active transport getaway to the Olympic Athletes' Village, the future one, at Hamilton. So I'd just also like to just acknowledge Loris Bonney, because, you know, I don't think many people in, in this chamber really know that she set the Australian record for the longest distance flown in one day, and that was from Archerfield to Wangaratta, a trip of some fourteen hours and thirty minutes. And she was the first woman aviator to be awarded an MBE, and I just think that that's amazing, that we have this riverwalk named after such an amazing pioneering woman. So it is fitting, through this SCP amendment, that we support and encourage local suppliers and companies to help to deliver this critical infrastructure. It showcases our city's natural beauty to the world, the Brekkie Creek design takes inspiration from Newstead's Moulton Bay and the figs that are there, and that is a great incorporation from a creative perspective. It will be an elegant bridge in its own right. incorporation from a creative perspective. It will be an elegant bridge in its own right, but it will also work to respect the historic Newstead House precinct. When two thousand three hundred trips are taken on the Loris Bonney River Walk each day, it is clear that this is a much needed connection and the precinct and River Walk will no doubt become even more popular. It is important that we do back local businesses to deliver, not just on the bridge itself, but also the one hundred and forty jobs that it supports. So we do look forward to getting on with this contract soon and with building the project for the people of Brisbane. Now, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to turn to item C and in particular, item number five. And on behalf of my Schrinner team colleague, councillor Atwood, I would just like to convey her appreciation on behalf of her constituents for the Manippi Parklands Bike Way. Now, this is a critical bike way which is providing a new length for cyclists through the Cannon Hill Bushland Reserve, and it will actually be a one-point-two-kilometre-long path which will be constructed between Winham Road and Creek Roads in Cannon Hill. And I know councillor Davis has been working with councillor Atwood on this project as well, because we have actually got two hundred and eighty-nine new trees being planted in this area, as well as two thousand seven hundred and fifty plants and ground cover. So this will make going through this bike way a wonderfully pleasant experience for many people. This project also includes the installation of a bridge structure, constructing retaining walls, and also putting in alongside the shared path, a fair bit of wave-finding signage. And for our little furry fauna friends out there in the community, we are also working hard to relocate nest hollows and providing additional nesting boxes for local faunas such as squirrel gliders. So there are a lot of different components to this project. It is funded by council and the Australian Government through the local roads and community infrastructure, the LRCI programme, which is the phase two of the grant programme. And I would like to say on behalf of the constituents from the Doughboy Ward and all of us here in council, as part of the Schrinner Council team, we appreciate the four million and ninety-five thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollar contribution of the federal government, because it's certainly going to be a great benefit to people in our city. Could I also refer, Mr. Chair, to the fire engineering technical reviews of Brisbane Metro Infrastructure? And I would just like to extend a very big thank you to wonderful people in the Queensland Fire and Emergency Services who have a statutory role to assess major infrastructure projects from a fire and safety perspective, and also the collaborative partnership that they have with the metro officers in council. So I think that there's a great deal of work that has been undertaken in that respect. And I do say to all the officers, thank you for your efforts on both of those contracts.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Further speakers, councillor Three.
Thanks, Chair. Rise to speak on the Breakfast Creek project. Wasn't going to talk to this, but I thought it was important to just put a bit of commentary on the record about the history of the area. Do want to emphasise, I think it's a really great project and I'm excited to see council funding it. I do think some residents were a little bit annoyed when the project was first announced and they thought it was going to be a bridge over the river and it turned out to just be a bridge over the creek, which the initial mapping that council released back when the mayor first made his, his announcement was a little bit confusing in that respect. But nonetheless, it is a positive project. I've just been interested, though, to see the way we talk about the history of this area in, in such a way that perhaps obscures or downplays its quite significant role in the, the early history of the Morton Bay penal colony, and more importantly, for the, the thousands of years before that time. The, the Breakfast Creek area was often referred to as a Breakfast Creek camp, was a really large permanent settlement of Aboriginal people. It was sometimes referred by early invaders as a fringe camp, but it wasn't actually a fringe camp. It was a settlement that had been there before the Europeans invaded. And in fact, one of the reasons that John Oxley was predisposed to recommending the site of the Brisbane Colony in its current location was that he saw value in being close to an existing large Aboriginal, Aboriginal settlement. It's kind of an interesting piece of Brisbane's history when you care to look into it, but the, the early European invaders saw that there was this large Aboriginal town nearby and thought, that'll be great, it'll be a source of labour, it'll be a source of resources and trade. And that was a crucial factor in deciding to situate the penal colony where they ended up putting it. And I think it's, it's important that we don't lose sight of this history because much of the commentary around Breakfast Creek, around the history, et cetera, at, at a glance, you'd almost think that there was no history before Newstead House. It's almost like that's when the oldest building in the area is. There's Newstead House and Breakfast Creek and there's nothing before that. And I think perhaps the, the council is, is trying, but it's perhaps doing a disservice to the area. This was probably one of the largest Aboriginal settlements in the Maiwa River floodplain. It was, it was a really big hub of trade. There are periods from the sort of mid eighteen fifties to the early nineteen hundreds where commentators, historians, et cetera, report that the Breakfast Creek settlement was supplying the vast bulk of the fish to provide, that, that was consumed by the Morton Bay penal colony. And a lot of the, a lot of the, the sailors, a lot of the boatsmen who, who were working the river were actually Aboriginal. They knew the, knew the river and the creeks really well. And so while we talk about the early maritime history of the river and its role as a sort of shipping port and a, a trade hub, et cetera, we're also obscuring the fact that a lot of those people who were operating the boats were actually local Aboriginal people who either willingly or unwillingly were co-opted into, into serving in that industry. There's even a really interesting story about the regatta, the, one of the early regatta, I don't know if councillor McLaughlin's aware of this one, but back in the eighteen hundreds, there was a regatta set up where white invaders would row, row boats in a competition against the local Aboriginal people. And the Aboriginal crews always won. And then eventually the white people were like, no, 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 we don't want them in the competition anymore, they're too good. And they made it a whites-only competition because they were sick of losing to the Aboriginal rowers, which is, yeah, it's, but the, yeah, there's, I mean, I guess I, I, I wanted to highlight this just because I think the council administration, while it is sometimes gesturing towards the Aboriginal history of this, this part of the city, I think is really downplaying it and, and overlooking it and in so doing, doing a disservice to our, our shared history. I was, there was a, in twenty nineteen, I think the council produced a booklet, I wrote down the name of it, was the Rome the River from Creek, Creek to Wharf, Breakfast Creek to Brettswarf. It's a twenty-one-page walking guide and it has like, it has seven or eight sentences about the Aboriginal history of the area. And it has a double-page spread on an old petrol station that was in the area. It has a double-page spread on a refreshment kiosk. There's actually more space allocated to the history of a refreshment kiosk that operated for a couple of decades than there is to the thousands of years of Aboriginal occupation of the area. So I'm not saying this out of any disrespect to any of the councillors in this chamber or to the project teams. And I realise I am cherry picking a few specific examples. I know there are other projects that have done a much better job of telling the Aboriginal history of that area. But Breakfast Creek is an important and, and interesting place. I mean, if nothing else, it's kind of weird that we've got a creek that has an Aboriginal name for most of its length, that runs like thirty K up into the western suburbs, and then for the last little bit where the creek reaches the cit, reaches the city, suddenly has a European name. Like, that in itself is kind of, kind of weird. But the underlying story of, of the history of Breakfast Creek as a, as a major Aboriginal hub, a trading town, a place where other groups like the Cubby, Cubby people used to come in from the coast and they would also camp around Breakfast Creek. It was a space that had its, its sporting grounds and its ceremonial grounds. There was apparently an Aboriginal burial site quite close to where Newstead House is currently located. It had, yeah, it had its short-term accommodation for those Aboriginal clans that were visiting elsewhere. It had long-term permanent residential villages scattered around that Hamilton reach. And it had very productive fishing ports or fishing spots all along the, the sandy beachfront, which is where the Loris Bonney River Walk's going to go. The, there's a lot of history there which, which is known to us. It's well documented in the literature. Anthropologists and historians have written plenty about it, but that doesn't seem to have fed through to how council commemorates the history of this area. And so I do really want to encourage the Lord Mayor, councillor Wines, the, the various councillors and council officers who are working on this project to take a second look at the history of, of Breakfast Creek and, and the Aboriginal town on the north side of that creek and think about how better we can commemorate and, and recognise that, particularly as part of this project. We're spending, what is it, like almost seventy million dollars on the bridge. Maybe doing a little bit more than a couple of historical plaques would be in order. And, and maybe there's space to think a bit more deeply about how we commemorate that history. I won't go into long details about the, the various attacks and conflicts on that site, but there, there are some pretty harrowing accounts of how the, the white settlers interacted with that town at times. There was one well documented story where policemen went across Breakfast Creek, which was something of a frontier between the Brisbane, the penal colony and sort of the Aboriginal controlled territory to the north of the creek. And about five or six policemen went, went across the creek and chased away or, or kind of, they, they use the term disperse, which is a bit, bit of a loaded term. But they fired, fired shots and they set fire to about eighty Aboriginal homes. So I think there's a lot of history there. And, and it would just be a really big shame if it's not recorded anywhere in the built landscape. And if we reinforce this narrative of the history of Breakfast Creek as starting with some, some boatyards and Breakfast Creek Hotel and, and Newstead House, when actually there's a lot more to that place that deserves to be remembered.
Thank you, councillor Three. Further speakers, councillor Landis.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item B and welcome the procurement of a contractor for the construction of the Beams Road upgrade from Lacey Road to Hanford Road and calls for tenders for stage one. With the increased growth in this area, it is important that this is a priority project with the nineteen thousand vehicles currently using this corridor and heavy vehicles making up five percent of this traffic movement. This is predicted to increase to twenty-six thousand vehicles per day by twenty thirty-one. So the Beams Road upgrade will reduce traffic congestion, improve safety and improve pedestrian and cycling accessibility. With the new EDQ major redevelopment project underway as part of the Castledine Urban Village Project and the new Holy Spirit College that actually opened its doors last week, the Schrinner Council is committed to delivering better active travel and improved pedestrian and cycling facilities and accessibility. This project, as we've heard, is funded by the Morrison Government under the Urban Congestion Fund. And I thank the Member for Petrie Luke Howarth for his work in lobbying for the fifty million dollars committed towards this upgrade. And Chair, can I say what a great, what great work our council officers have already done on this project? In less than a year, we have had planning and community consultation. The pandemic and lockdowns have not held us back. And I want to thank and acknowledge our fantastic team for their commitment, dedicated, dedication and passion. And so in less than a year, we are already calling for tenders for stage one and getting on with improving this corridor. As has already been said, that within the footprint of stage one, which you can see on the preliminary design, there is one big blank section. And that is the Beams Road rail level crossing, where we are lacking information. So despite the Schrinner Council already supporting the removal of this open level crossing with funds that were actually allocated in the two thousand and nineteen budget to support it and funding committed by the federal government, the state government, who is responsible for the building of the infrastructure, has not commenced the build. And can I point out, Chair, it is really disappointing that councillor for Deegan Ward has previously claimed that these important designs for safety and inclusion of the overpass are only minor. Alarm bells should go off right there. And we should all be thankful that he is not in charge of all the infrastructure upgrades being delivered around Brisbane. It is disappointing that the councillor for Deegan has blindly followed the member for Aspli, who is misleading him and the public with fake campaigns. The Schrinner Council has been ready to support the removal of this open level crossing for years. And that funding was allocated in the two thousand and nineteen budget. The federal government then joined in with their commitment, but the state government still felt the need to do community consultation, waste money on asking residents what should be done when they just wanted it to get, be done, and form a business case. It wasn't until the LMP candidate for Aspli committed to this project that the Labour Member for Aspli finally came kicking and screaming to the party. We are still waiting for Strathpine Road and Linkfield Road to be delivered.
Councillors, allow, allow the speech to be heard in silence, please. Councillor Cassidy.
We're still waiting for Linkfield Road, three years on, to be delivered, Chair. He has a track record of promising and not delivering.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Three.
Sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing the speaker and I've asked you to call the chamber to order.
Thank you. I'm asking all councillors to come back to order, please. No interjecting.
Despite the good working relationship the Schrinner Council has with TMR and the Minister for Transport, where the normal process of project delivery is being followed and due diligence is being met, out of the blue came these bizarre claims. Council was the first level of government to commit to fixing this problem, problem. And we are getting on with the job of making our roads safer and busting congestion. With the main construction of Beams Road starting in twenty twenty-two, we can only hope that the state government's promise to remove the open level crossing on this corridor will actually begin. The removal of this crossing will dramatically improve road safety and significantly reduce traffic congestion. And Chair, we have certainly seen in the last week just how vital the Beams Road arterial is in my community and to broader Brisbane with the forced closure of the Linkfield Road overpass due to damage caused by a vehicle passing under it on the Gimpy arterial. Unfortunately, as you know, Chair, that despite the federal funds for the building of a new Linkfield Road overpass being available for three years now, the state government, as the builder, has not even planned this crucial, crucial infrastructure yet. As a result of the burden of carrying this traffic now, it has been thrown onto the other arterial roads of Beams Road and Brackenridge Road and Hoyland and Strathpine Road. Residents have reported it taking up to an hour to take their children to school or to pick up milk and bread. In fact, some children were late to school on what was for them their very first day of schooling. And for parents who were going back to work that day, being late as well. Accidents do happen and it was unfortunate that this happened to the bridge. And we accept that it's not the state government's fault that that had to be closed. But sadly, it was due to their misinformation or lack of communication, poor signage, that led to Monday's chaos. It was exacerbated by that state government not informing the public so that they could prepare their journey on the first day of school. Beams Road having an open level train crossing has only complicated this debacle. And my community that is already suffering with congestion and safety concerns in this area is now faced with triple the time to commute. The Schrinner Council, however, is getting on with the building of better roads for Brisbane. And less than a year on, the Beams Road upgrade is powering on to deliver for the people of my ward, for the Member for, councillor for Deegan's ward. And I'm excited and supportive of this motion today to begin the tender process and see works begin very soon.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Johnston?
Yes, just briefly on, I'll say all three items, I'm not sure I'll quite get there. I would love to speak about item A and item B in some more detail. But for anybody who may be listening or watching at home, all of the important information that we would normally be able to talk about has been redacted. We are not allowed to talk about the weighted evaluation criteria, other than the one where they're self-praising for allegedly delivering additional local benefits. But then I think councillor Owen undermined that argument to saying no. to saying no, they're always working towards the additional local benefits. So this has just been a paperwork snafu that we're fixing up today. But the problem with all of this is, this government is hiding what it is doing when it comes to major projects. We're not allowed to talk about the amounts of money involved. We're not allowed to talk about the criteria upon which these projects will be delivered. And that is how this council rolls. They are happy to fund projects in marginal LNP wards when it suits them. They don't want anybody to know how much it costs. They don't want anybody to know under what grounds that these projects are being built. And that is exactly the same for the green bridges and also for the Beams Road upgrade. And of course, it is reflected in what the marginal LNP councillors have said in this chamber today. I mean councillor Landers' lovely speech that somebody wrote for her, simply attacking the Labour state government and praising the federal government and praising council was politics 101. It's fascinating that this, over the last few weeks, I think probably over Christmas, they had a bit of a think. My guess would be they either had a one day workshop or they went and had a weekend away somewhere maybe as a bit of a team and that, yeah, well I'm on the money now. And, and, yeah, I'm on the money now. And they went away and they said, well, look, we've got to figure out how to distract from our stuff ups because this is a stuff up today, this contract. We've got to figure out how to deflect from our stuff ups and take the attention away from all the problems we've got at council. And you've seen this come out of the Lord Mayor's playbook over the last few weeks. It's increased very significantly. We are going to move motions all about the state Labour government. Now, I've been, you know, thinking about why and I'm thinking, okay, does the Lord Mayor really think Chris Ofili is that hopeless? Well, yes, that could well be the case. Is the Lord Mayor or somebody else on this team?
Point of order Chair. Councillor Johnston, take a quick question?
No.
Who's Chris Ofili?
Councillor Three.
Yeah, yeah, good question councillor.
Who is Chris Ofili?
He's the opposition.
Councillor Please. Councillor Johnston, you're not taking the question?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, I'll take it as an interjection. So he's the leader of the LNP at the state level and, you know, I don't know, I think your question is a valid one, but I don't, I think that possibly the Lord Mayor thinks he's not pulling his weight in the team and he's got to do the heavy lifting for him because there's a bit of that going on for sure. But I'm wondering whether or not that there's a few nervous LNP councillors here and they're looking for exit strategies. So they're starting to talk about state issues and I think maybe we're going to see some more Campbell Newman like behaviour, where there's a few of these councillors who are going to be looking to jump ship and looking for a state seat. So I think that there is a real issue with why the LNP councillors are in here saying federal government good.
Point of order Mister Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Adams.
Can I ask you to call the council back to anything that is on the E and C report, please? LNP councillors, Chris Ofili and otherwise is not in this report.
Councillor Johnston, yes, can I please bring you back to the issues that are before us with what's on the agenda? You said you wanted to speak to all items, I encourage you to do so, rather than into other areas of debate.
And it's fascinating, isn't it? Councillor Landers stood up for 10 minutes and criticised the state Labour government, criticised the state Labour government and that was perfectly fine. Here's the deputy mayor running interference to stop me from questioning why an LNP councillor is standing up and spending 10 minutes criticising the state Labour government. Well, it's pretty clear, I'm on the money. It just, it strikes me, and I'm back to where I started on this, I'd love to talk about what's in these reports, but you've redacted all the relevant information, redacted it all. We're not even allowed to talk about how much these projects are costing the rate payers of Brisbane because you've redacted it all. And redacting it all, you've come out now and basically sent out your marginal seat holders to hop up and attack the state Labour government. That's all this has been going on today. That's it. So I have been wondering what's going on and I'm going to be speculating a little further on this. If you're going to continue, there's another motion on the agenda today that's suddenly become urgent, which is about state government issues. Last week, you know, that's what this council was on about the week before. So I'm happy to debate council matters, but when you bring it in here and you redact it, you make that very difficult. And when the LNP councillor stand up and say state Labour government bad, federal Liberal government good, council Liberal government good, you don't leave us with a lot of opportunity. I would have hoped that perhaps there might be some more information about why. I mean, I don't believe this. I don't believe this is a paperwork issue. Something that is a little bit not in the detail of this report is going on behind the scenes. I have absolutely no doubt that this is a stuff up and I just hope that it is not going to cost the rate payers of Brisbane because what happens with these big contracts, if they do have to adjust all their tenders, we saw it with this council, this Lord Mayor's stuff up on the metro, it ends up costing the rate payers millions of dollars more because the cost of bidding on the project goes up. These have real consequences, these decisions, and you'll never hear it from someone like councillor Landers because all she wanted to do was talk about the state Labour government. The real issue here is why is this council continuing to stuff up its major projects? This is the Lord Mayor's signature project of his administration. He stood up, he said it. This is what I'm all about on day one when he became Lord Mayor. Now, when it comes to delivery at the very first bridge project, we're already seeing problems with the governance and the tendering processes and they're having to come back in here retrospectively and try and clean it up. And then to deflect from the problem, the problem that is in this report today, we get interference like that from councillor Landers. I don't think that's good enough. So I really don't trust what this administration is saying to me. I am extremely concerned that there will be very real financial impacts to the rate payers and this project will end up costing more. It'll take longer and I don't think that's good for our city. I did note in the contracts and tendering report, there are a number of major projects, but I just want to talk very briefly about the Mogal Road upgrade project. I've had a number of complaints from residents about the hack job that council's done in cutting down, I must be, hundreds of trees through Mogal Road. Every single tree through that corridor has been cut down. Now, I understand that there is a major project to be delivered, but the blunt instrument that council has used to undertake the removal of every single tree through that project corridor is absolutely unnecessary. I don't know whether or not there were any that could be saved. It's across the road from, sorry, across the river from my ward, so it is in a different ward, but the impact of it for my residents has been shocking. And I think that council could have gone about this in a more subtle way. I'm sure not every tree needed to be cut down immediately. I'm sure that at this stage, there are some still preliminary roadworks going on. So I think that council could have done a better job in managing the environmental impacts of the project that they are delivering. And I'm extremely concerned about what council is doing. They are continuing to let these chunks of the project to different service providers. And it is very concerning that there doesn't seem to be a focus on the environmental impacts of the project.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Further speakers?
Mister Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. Thank you. We have a motion for the adjournment of the council meeting for afternoon tea. Moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Adams. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We have quorum. Thank you councillors. We are in debate on the E and C report. E and C report councillor Wines.
Thank you Mister Chair. I just thought I rise to make some further contributions to the report on, which is before us at the moment. Can I make in particular some comments about Beams Road? This is a significant milestone in the delivery of what will be a key upgrade to what is a key corridor for the outer northern suburbs of Brisbane that runs from Tagam to Castledine. Through, we see new schools, there are very significant school being built in this precinct. We have existing schools, we have the train line, we have a range of shopping centres. This is a key, a key link to make sure that our road network operates more effectively. This road, we're grateful for the planners of the past who did keep much of the corridor vacant of residential and commercial properties, which has allowed us a lot of the space we need without the need to resume. Disappointingly as always, I am always disappointed when I have to learn that this is the case. Sometimes there are properties that will be required for resumption to ensure that this project proceeds and that this council is handling that matter sensitively and generously with those residents and we're working through the resumption process at the moment. There's some interesting contributions about a lack of information around the price or the cost. This project has never, it's been quite open, the Lord Mayor said it in his speech earlier, $73 million is the price associated with this, with a $50 million contribution from the federal government, which we are always appreciative of. That, this means that we will be able to do our work from the rail line to Hanford Road at Tagum and from, excuse me, and from the rail line west as far as the $72 million can take us effectively. So that's the road corridor. Separately, we will be doing the underground utilities and the pedestrian improvements all the way to Lacey Road as part of this stage one. I think it's important to reflect on that and that is stage two if it's required and then stage three, if they're required in the future, stage two and three projects and their potential contracts will appear before us in the years to come. This council is confident that we'll be able to deliver this project within the budgeted allocation and that we believe that this project will be a meaningful improvement to the way of life of people in outer northern suburbs of Brisbane. The, some contributions about the report, page seven, item number 40 within the report, summary of key risks associated with this project. The leader of the opposition noted that the one item that is of high risk, a risk rating high, project interface impacts due to adjacent TMR Beams Road level crossing project and ensure coordination and cooperation between both project teams with potentially stage two being influenced by that work. Now, we begin by saying that this council absolutely supports the replacement of this open level crossing with effectively a bridge. The council stands ready and keen and enthusiastic to make our financial contribution of $40 million to ensure that that project is completed. There have been some concerns raised about that interface, which were brought up by some earlier speakers, but effectively, we are concerned about how the water will run off the bridge, how people with mobility issues can walk across the bridge and the speed at which, excuse me, and the height. So interestingly, the height being proposed among the state government's reference design is much higher than the other two road bridges over train lines. The Gibung and the Brackenridge rail crossings are much shorter. And the benefit of them being shorter is the gradient is less and it means that people, people with mobility issues, people in wheelchairs, people with bad knees, people in prams being pushed by their parents can go over these things comfortably. I find it really concerning that if you consider the context that last week, the leader of the opposition criticised this council for not properly paying due consideration to an individual who used the Melton Howes upgrade at Tomball or Nunda, however, whichever you prefer, that that person's needs weren't met and I must stress that they in fact were. But this week, when a whole community will not have their disability concerns recognised, that becomes an unreasonable condition to request of the state. That senior people and people in prams aren't required to continue to cross at the same, across the train line at the ground level is in the view of the leader of the opposition an unreasonable concern. I do not agree with him and nor do, nor do any of my colleagues on this side of the room. We are very, very concerned about how much water this bridge proposes to put into our drainage system. And will it create flooding issues around the base, you know, in the intersection of our two projects and will it flood residential homes? The information is yet to be forthcoming about whether that is the case. In fact, the leader of the opposition rightly recognised that the state are so concerned about this project, they tried to get us to do it for them. Such was their concern about it. I noted also with interest that the Minister for Transport in a media conference in late December, I want to say December 28th, referred to his need to come to us in a crisis meeting to save the project. And we, as always, are prepared to save the state government's project. And we were happy to participate in that. I attended that meeting, as did the Lord Mayor and some very talented and senior officers from our organisation were there to help the state through that. And I can assure you that we have transferred all information to the state that is necessary for them to complete their detailed design and that the steering committee has met this year and I believe once last year. So the operation of that steering committee met on the 22nd of November last year and the 4th of February this year. And we continue to work with the state in a meaningful way to help them deliver their project, offering both financial and technical expertise to ensure that it actually happens to the benefit of all Brisbane residents. The project, there's been some conjecture proposed by figures supportive of the Labour Party that the council has somehow used our massive powers to stop the state government, which is quite frankly, to anyone who's worked in this room for longer than 20 minutes, a ludicrous proposition that anybody in the council could stop the state from doing whatever they chose. Not only is it ludicrous to suggest that we have been able to hold up this project, because the state could have merely swatted us aside and done what they chose. They are the ones with the authority in the state of Queensland. It's important to remember and recognise that the state government has yet to commence any of the land acquisition process required to collect the land necessary from residents and from their own interests, EDQ for example, to build their project. They have yet to commence the service relocation. So we don't know where the power, water and information communications cables will be going when the new project, when their project moves forward. And if anything, that indecision, that imprecision on their part is actually delaying some of our works so that we can't be confident where they are going to propose to put their services. Those items, the water sewer, power and communication lines exist within what we would expect to be the open level crossing structure. They have yet to begin their detailed design and they haven't yet submitted, they haven't yet completed their business case, nor have they submitted it to the federal government to satisfy the needs of that. to satisfy the needs of that funding arrangement. All of these things, council is working very hard to get them over the line, but they have to do some things for themselves in their project over their rail line in the commitment that they made. Council remains enthusiastic in our support, both financially and technically and we continue to work with the state to address their many, many concerns and we hope to continue cooperating to achieve a quality outcome for the residents of North Brisbane.
Thank you councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers, further speakers, Lord Mayor, summing up.
Yeah, thank you Mr Chair, thank you to those who spoke on these items. I just wanted to raise a couple of issues. First of all, the independent councillor, wrongfully suggesting that the budget of the project wasn't available when in fact I actually mentioned the budget of the project, wrongfully suggesting that you can't talk about the project because everything's been redacted, wrong, but also failing to understand basic commerciality here. So when you're going into a tender process or when you're part of a tender process or it's underway, would it be responsible on behalf of the ratepayers to reveal every single detail about the project including things like contingencies? Would that be responsible? So if you said for example, oh by the way, we've budgeted a particular amount plus contingency on top of that, do you think that maybe the competitive market forces might become a little bit less competitive and the price of the project then would rise to whatever the budget was that you published? Maybe, I don't know, does anyone see a problem here? And so let me be clear, the only commercial and confidence information is information designed to protect the interests of the ratepayers so that we get the best possible deal for those ratepayers. But having said that, once the project happens, all of that information can then be released. Just like when we finished Kingsley Smith Drive fifteen million dollars under budget, that information was released and we paid back that fifteen million dollars straight back to the ratepayers of Brisbane. And so it is absolute rubbish and a misrepresentation to suggest that information that the community needs to know and in fact that tenders need to know has not been released. The only information that has been withheld is information that protects the commercial and financial interests of the ratepayers so that we don't get ripped off. Now councillor Johnson also made some extraordinary comments because she gets very offended whenever the state government is mentioned and I don't know why, like literally whenever the state government is mentioned, she must jump to its defence immediately and she made the quote, the quote, she made the quote.
No interjections please.
Federal government good, council good, state bad, right? Trying to suggest that everything could be simplified down to federal government good, council good, state bad. Now this is from the person that in council, every time she speaks says council bad, council bad, council bad, council bad, council bad, over and over again. In fact, whenever she opens her mouth is to try and say that council is bad, whenever she opens her mouth. I have not heard councillor Johnson say a positive thing about council for years and years and years and in fact even when she was a member of this team, she still didn't say any positive things about council. Now, to suggest that it can be simplified down to that and that we're not allowed to raise concerns about the state government is once again ludicrous. Is this a place of debate or is this something where it has to be narrowed down to federal government good, council good, state bad? Or in fact state good, federal government good, council bad? I don't know, but the reality, the reality is this, if we have legitimate concerns to raise with another level of government or about another level of government, we should absolutely do so in this place. And what councillor Landers did in a very reasonable way was raise some concerns about a number of issues with her part of Brisbane, particularly some of the major road corridors, including Beams Road and including the Linkfield Road Bridge, a bridge which should have already been upgraded by now after state government had their act together. Federal government put up the money, state government sat on their hands, the bridge was then hit and it wasn't the state government's fault that the bridge was hit and councillor Landers mentioned that, but the management then of the traffic diversions had been a debacle. That was the state government's fault. And then we also heard councillor Cassidy's contribution where he was talking about the Beams Road project and the open level crossing replacement and said, and this has been fed to him straight by the state member for Aspli, there were, that Brisbane City Council had put red tape and unreasonable conditions on the Beams Road open level crossing project. Now the very first point to this was raised by councillor Wines. The state government does not need our approval for anything they do and in fact time and time again, they exempt themselves from getting our approval, just like when they put in ministerial designations on pretty much everything that happens in the city. They want to upgrade a school, they put in a ministerial designation, they upgrade the school. They force all the traffic problems around that school onto us and make that our problem, but they don't need our approval for anything. They can do whatever they want in the state of Queensland, they don't need our approval. So the suggestion that, oh, councils being unreasonable and holding up the project is rubbish, rubbish. But what are those so-called unreasonable conditions that we've put? Now first of all, we haven't put any conditions because we don't have the right to put conditions because frankly, state government can do whatever they want. But as councillor Wines pointed out, we wanted to make sure that the drainage was appropriate so that local residents and businesses didn't get flooded. Is that unreasonable? And we wanted to make sure that people with a disability could safely access through this area. Is that unreasonable? These are what councillor Cassidy refers to, red tape and unreasonable conditions. What? What? I think what it comes down to is this, the only open level crossing replacement projects that have happened in Brisbane in the last twenty years have been by this council and the LMP. This state government has not replaced any open level crossings that I'm aware of in the last twenty years and so what they've done is come to us for some advice which we've willingly provided. We're not holding up the project, we're simply providing some advice. The real reason we've seen some politics being played is because a certain state member had a big billboard up saying, construction on this project will start in 2021. They came to the end of the year and thought, we, we've got this billboard and people have photographs of this billboard saying, construction of the overpass will start in 2021, we're basically in November and, you know, the dog ate their homework, who can we blame? Oh, Brisbane City Council, the whipping boy for everything, the whipping boy for everything. And so they tried to blame us, whereas all we had done is tried to help, all we had done is tried to help. And you know what? We also, we do value the relationship that we've got with Minister Bailey. It's been a productive relationship. It wasn't always that way, but unfortunately there are some local members who wet their pants really easily and that's what we saw happen in this case. Pants wetting happened and then they had to find someone to blame and sadly they blamed us when all we had done is tried to help. And as councillor Landers pointed out, we were the first to come to the table with money, the first level of government out of the three to come to the table with money in 2019 budget, shortly after I'd become Lord Mayor, the money was there, it was in the budget and then the federal government came on board and then, you know, in the lead up to the election, the state government came on board. So we have been right from the beginning, big champions of this project, big supporters of this project and so we will continue to work with the state government to help them with their project, to support their project because it will be a good outcome for the people of Brisbane and particularly the people of that part of Brisbane around the Beams Road Corridor. We support these projects and will continue to do so and it is sad that some people continue to try and play politics with these projects when it is not helpful, it is not helpful at all. And so let's get on with the Beams Road Corridor upgrade, let's get on with the open level crossing replacement and let's get on with providing these good benefits for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you Lord Mayor, your time has expired. We now move to the vote on items A and B in the ENC report, items A and B, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division second.
Division's been called by councillor Adams and seconded by councillor Landers. Please ring the bells. Thank you, all councillors who are with us today are here. This is the division on items A and B in the ENC report, all in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? Thank you Clark.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour, one against and one abstention.
Thank you, declare that motion carried. We now move to item C in the ENC report, item C, the ENC report, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Division. Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Cassidy, assuming all councillors are still in their seats, we move straight to the division. The division is on item C in the ENC report, all in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Any opposed, please say no. Are there any abstentions? You're right, yes. Have you got that? Clarks.
Thanks Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and six against.
Thank you, declare that motion carried.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, under section twelve, subsection three, I move the suspension of standing rules to enable me to move a motion.
Thank you, okay, a motion for the suspension of standing rules being moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, so the reason I'm seeking the suspension of standing rules today and could not have submitted the motion which I will detail shortly by one PM yesterday is because new information has now come to the attention of this council and should be dealt with today. I've moved the suspension of standing rules today to raise the issue of the ongoing and escalating politicisation of council by the LMP. Now previously we've seen the LMP blur the lines when it comes to councils branding, we've seen candidates use colours and also the council cleat on political flyers, we've seen the Lord Mayor use his Living in Brisbane newsletter more and more as his own personal self-promotion flyer and just when you thought it couldn't get any worse Chair, we now see these campaign style photos of himself on the front cover and also campaign style language such as why I'm backing him. Now the LMP Lord Mayor and his administration no longer refer to Brisbane City Council properly and we've just had the Lord Mayor confirm and several of his LMP colleagues today say that Brisbane City Council has now been officially rebranded as the Shrinna Council. This LMP mayor leads the Shrinna administration, not the Shrinna council chair. LMP councillors are now including the term Shrinna council in their official council email footers. This LMP administration is totally out of control. Residents have become increasingly concerned about this arrogant behaviour, some have spoken out and I quote, once again, your assumption of ownership of our council seems like immodest self-aggrandizement. I've given the Lord Mayor plenty of time during question time Chair and during his ENC report, which he can talk about any matter, to clear this up and he certainly did make it very clear that his intention and his party's intention is now to rebrand the Brisbane City Council in his own name, which is a complete and utter politicisation of the Brisbane City Council. So he's refused to rule that out, so I'm seeking to suspend standing rules to move a motion that Brisbane City Council bans the use of the political term Shrinna council on official material.
Thank you, have you forwarded that through councillor Cassidy? Okay, so the motion before council, procedural motion for the suspension of standing rules to allow a motion to be put, all in favour of that, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Thank you councillors, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules, all in favour of that suspension of standing rules to allow a motion to be put, please raise your hands and say aye. Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being six in favour and nineteen against.
Declare the motion for the suspension of standing rules lost. We now move on to the remainder of today's agenda, deputy mayor, the economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report please.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the eighth of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday eighth of February 2022 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair, just before I get to the committee report from last week, I just want to remind people that the Business Hub is open and operating. We are just over a year now and it's been going from strength to strength. The programmes are continuing albeit most in teams at the moment unless it's just some one-on-one mentoring, but there is plenty online for people to actually get engaged and maybe even a little bit easier if they're working from home to get engaged there as well. We've supported more than seven thousand Brisbane businesses this year and it's set to even get bigger and better. Some of the highlights coming up over the next couple of weeks in February, leading into International Women's Day on the twenty-second, we have the celebrating the launch of the Marvelous Women Cards and we have a panel discussion from inspiring Brisbane-based women taking all things decision-making legacy and how to make an impact in those, these challenging times. A very popular presentation that is filling up fast is the Winning Government Business Workshop and that's being presented by Thomas Pollack from GovReady to help local businesses be ready for experiences of interest panels and giving them best shot of securing government revenue streams. And then on the first of March, we have the Data Storytelling Workshop that will teach you everything you need to know about data and what it can tell you about your business. And on the second of March, we kick off the On the Couch for 2022 with Gert Jan de Graaf, the CEO of Brisbane Airport Corporation, who will dive into the effects of the COVID on the travel industry, which I'm sure BAC knows very well about, and share his experience on effective management and how he stayed focused and driven through these very challenging times. That is just in the next two weeks, so please again promote on your socials councillors right across the city so we can get people supported in their businesses in what we have been hearing on the ground, our very challenging times in the pseudo lockdown that we've experienced over the last few weeks as well. Last week we did have a presentation in committee on our social enterprise support and growth programmes. Again, we've announced today the support for the women's in business, we have been looking at PropTech over the years, we are, and food and agribusiness, launched PropTech, looking at MedTech, but we have also been looking at social enterprise, which is very much a growth area in business in Brisbane. But we have also been looking at social enterprise, which is very much a growth area in business in Brisbane. Five years ago, you spent a lot of time explaining to people what social enterprise now was and what is it. And we don't understand, is it a charity wise and a charity? But now, I think it's come into the lexicon. People recognise that social enterprise is a business, like any other business, but with a triple bottom line as well for the community. So the Economic Development team has been focusing on providing business support to assist social enterprises to grow and prosper. And we've been doing this through a range of ways over the years. We run annual Lord Mayor's business forums that have been specifically on social enterprises so they can get some important networking opportunities and the chance to hear from successful guest speakers. We funded the first dedicated office space for social enterprise sector in the C B D, which now has then morphed into the former part of the council's Business Hub. So Q C E, Queensland Social Enterprise Council, is co-located with the Business Hub in Queen Street. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, we had the Social Enterprise Accelerator Programme. We had fifty-one social enterprises with training and support during their startup phase to help develop their business models from concept into reality. And we had some fantastic pitch nights when we got to see some of those fantastic ideas. We've adapted and tailored our programming as the sector has matured as well. And we've now moved into a more targeted approach to support established enterprises through our new business coaching programme. This programme supported thirteen enterprises last year through a bespoke one-on-one coaching to grow their business. And applications are now open for twenty twenty-two. And the programme will run from March through to June. And of course, we have got the Social Enterprise World Forum, which is coming at the end of the year to Brisbane. It's been running since two thousand and eight and attracts everyone, everything from two to three thousand attendees, policymakers, corporate, public sectors, academics and social investors. It's taken place all over the world and we are lucky enough to have won the bid in partnership with the Brisbane Economic Development Agency Council and White Box as the main sponsors. I was at the closing ceremony for the Canadian World Enterprise Forum last year, where they officially handed the baton over to Brisbane for this year. And we're looking forward to that programme in October here in Brisbane, in person and online for all the attendees as well. I think what we have to be very, very clear about here is that the Shrinna council is dedicated to being the most small business-friendly local government in Australia. And that definitely includes the support for Brisbane social enterprises.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? We now move to the vote on this motion. All in favour of this report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Owen, please, the Transport Committee report. That's it, your head green light. Can you assist there, Dorian? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Public and National Transport Committee dated Tuesday, the first of February, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, it's been moved by councillor Owen and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the eighth of February, be adopted. Councillor Owen.
Eighth of February. Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, just following on from the question earlier today, and I do thank councillor Long for the question earlier. It is very important that we do address these safer paths to school because it is something that, right across our city, that we are delivering on. And that is actually making it a lot better for parents to get their kids to and from school in a safer way. And particularly, those school drop-off and pick-up times are very difficult around schools. And we do have a lot of people that are very concerned about that safety. But the important thing is that when we are looking at these safer paths to school, that it does connect up with what we are trying to do with our Active School Travel Programme because these two programmes go hand in glove. And it all helps to make the trip to school safer and without the need for a car. Because if you've got those footpaths, it does give those people in the local community the opportunity to utilise the footpaths. Now, as many councillors are aware, potential locations for new footpaths and wider footpaths are identified from a variety of sources, including customer requests and councillor requests, the Active School Travel Parent and Student Surveys and also school traffic management plans. So we can often get requests as well from school P and Cs. And all of these facilitate an opportunity for the council officers to go out, investigate these requests and have the further conversations, not only at a divisional level, but also engaging with the councillors at a local feedback level as well. Now, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, this financial year, it is proposed to construct a total of eighteen footpaths near nineteen schools, including those that I mentioned that were completed over summer and also have been completed this financial year. So these are across pretty much nearly all of the wards. But it is very, very important that we do establish a priority for these safer paths to school and make sure that we can address as many of them as possible for delivery to enhance that safety aspect. So this project will continue on its delivery right across the remainder of the financial year. And we do have a number of footpaths that have been identified that will be coming across and being delivered. So where possible, the delivery by councillor Wines's portfolio area, they do a great job over there, in conjunction with the transport officers. The delivery will occur during school holidays. And that is in order to minimise disruption around schools at drop-off and pick-up times. And the project will also continue with the identification and assessment of footpath locations for consideration within a future safer paths to school programme. So I say to all councillors, if you have concerns around schools and you want to put those footpaths forward, you are certainly welcome to put those councillor requests through. And we are in budget submission time, so I do encourage you to do so on behalf of your local communities. The Shrinna council is getting on with the job of getting residents home sooner and safer. And that includes making sure that that school drop-off and pick-up is safe and easy for those members of our community who have little ones. Can I also say that during committee this morning, there were a couple of questions that came up. In response to the question from councillor Cassidy, can I say to you, councillor Cassidy, that that footpath that was raised as part of that submission this morning, it was actually an approach from a person with vision impairment and also that person has a guide dog. The Paddington Ward Office was approached initially in May, twenty twenty-one. And can I say thank you to councillor Matic for prioritising this matter with the officers and progressing through with them their investigation to look for an opportunity where this pedestrian crossing could go. And thank you also for prioritising the safety and wellbeing of residents and locals in your community for this project and making sure that from an access and inclusion perspective, that this request was given priority certainly as well. So also councillor Sri had a question in regards to a prioritised crossing. Councillor Sri, I can say to you that the concept design did not have that, but it is certainly being investigated and explored as the final design is being prepared. So there is a full investigation and assessment process underway. And certainly, the team are looking at that as part of your feedback and will continue to provide some information. It's not expected that that final design will be completed until about July, twenty twenty-two. So there may be a few months where they're still working on the project and still looking at that design. So they'll certainly come back to you later in the year with some information in regards to that. So I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? No further speakers. We now move to the vote on the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report, the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated, held on Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, the eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week, the committee saw a presentation about how council manages major events such as New Year's Eve. And sometimes, I often review that when some topics sound a little bit lighter when you see them on the agenda paper, they actually become quite thorough. And I just wanted to thank the officers for the efforts that they went to in their presentation, but also clearly effort that they went to to ensure that New Year's Eve ran well. Disappointingly and somewhat predictably, the crowds weren't what you would hope this New Year's Eve. But we hope that they will return soon and our team will be there, ready to manage that and other major events that require street closures and coordination of transport to ensure people can attend and then get home from these events and also manage a whole range of stakeholders, both internal and external. Can I just commend the officers who do that work and thank them for their presentation?
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We move to the vote on the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted.
Thank you.
Seconded.
And it's been seconded by councillor Landers. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had an update on our village precinct projects programme. Quite a few Ps in all of that. Nonetheless, they are terrific projects and they're occurring right across the city. So the Shrinna council has invested more than ten million dollars over four years to revamp our iconic neighbourhood centres right across the city. It's the largest ever investment in suburban shopping strips and the timing could not have been better, with more people staying close to home, shopping locally and supporting small business. We are unashamedly about making Brisbane suburbs even better. And that's why eighty-six percent of the budget is dedicated to building better infrastructure and delivering better services to our suburbs. From Cooperoo, Camp Hill and the Corso, through to Paddington, Milton and Ash Grove West, to the beautiful Bayside Village in Manly Harbour, all of these locations are getting village precinct projects. We're breathing new life into these local hubs that have been part of the fabric of the Brisbane community for generations. We recently saw the completion of Manly Harbour at eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the Fourshore Plaza area. And I've been down there recently in councillor Cummings Ward. And I have to say, it is a terrific location and I think it adds a lot to the village down there. The three million dollar Ash Grove West project is not far behind, with construction due to be completed in the next month or so. Camp Hill, Cooperoo and Paddington are well underway with final project plans in development and construction planned for early this year. Mansfield, Milton and Boondle have all completed their first round of community engagement and will be looking to incorporate this feedback into the final concept designs. There's still time to have your say on the plans to revamp Lumley Street in Upper Mount Gravat, which has so far had strong engagement with the local community, putting forward their thoughts and ideas on how to better this much-loved local shopping precinct. Our village precinct projects are much more than just a facelift. They're all about creating a city of vibrant neighbourhoods with livable places for locals and visitors alike. They help kick-start the local economy and support local businesses to grow and prosper. And obviously, off the back of that, support local employment, making Brisbane an even better place to live, work and relax. I look forward to keeping you informed as we continue to roll these projects out. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I would like to rise and just confirm that this programme, since it was first announced in the budget a few years ago, an L M P initiative that no one was told about. So the projects that first appeared were internally chosen, benefited mainly L M P wards. I think there was one in Anala, I think it might have been originally. But I want to put on the record what's actually in the paper here before us today. And councillor Allen very helpfully ran through them. So there have been fourteen village precincts projects since two thousand and eighteen and they are in the following areas. And I think there are some still to come in this list. Manly Harbour, now that is A L P. I'm pretty sure that's councillor Cummings' area. But we all know that L M P already think councillor Cummings a member of the Liberal Party as they've made out for months now. Ash Grove West, that's definitely an L M P area. Paddington, well, still technically an L M P area, but for how much longer, that's a little unclear. Camp Hill, L M P area. Cooperoo, L M P area. Milton, L M P area. Mansfield, L M P area. Upper Mount Gravat, L M P area. Boondle, that's you, so that's an A L P one. And Rosalie, L M P. And the vast majority of all of these are in L M P wards and marginal L M P wards. So when councillor Allen stands up and says they are being undertaken all across the city, no they're not. My ward has been ignored and I've been pushing for a skip in Graceville and Annelie for fourteen years now. And the minute the village precinct projects were undertaken, we did a petition for Annelie. So this is a shopping area that is in desperate need, in desperate need of investment by Brisbane City Council. And a village precinct project would certainly be valuable in that area. It is divided by a horrific arterial road that disconnects that community. It's an essential shopping precinct for one of the biggest suburbs in Brisbane. There's, you know, six thousand households in Annelie. And their local shops look like they're from a time forgotten, you know, a century ago. And, you know, what do we get? This council gave them five thousand dollars for Junction Fest, so that's great. But when you see six million dollars for projects in marginal L M P wards, we know that suburbs like Annelie are missing out. So councillor Allen, let me tell you, when you predominantly fund projects in L M P wards as you are doing in the papers before us today, that's not delivering projects right across the city. That's governing for yourself.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Allen, summing up.
Oh, look, I'd just add to the comments that councillor Johnston just made. The reality is, they are being delivered right across the city. And even the list of suburbs she read out are clearly right across the city. These particular projects were a campaign commitment. So, you know, people knew where they were going to be delivered. And, you know, as we often say in this chamber, certainly the village precinct projects are primarily in L M P wards. And that's because we've got the vast majority of the people in the chamber here.
Yes.
Thank you, councillor Allen. We now move to the vote on this motion for the City Planning Suburban Renewal Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, eighth of February, twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week, we had a presentation on the Lord Mayor's Young Environment Leadership Network Programme. This programme has been running since twenty thirteen and supports students in schools by empowering students to create real change in their school community. The programme works with year-ten students to use the theoretical knowledge they have learnt at school and apply it to projects that could help create sustainable change for their school. Students attend five council-facilitated meetings throughout the year that equip them with lifelong skills in project management, communication and leadership. To determine a project, students are asked to analyse issues they find, assess their effects both locally and globally and weigh up where they can invest their efforts within their school to implement change. Participating schools nominate two students and a support teacher who help navigate approvals and processes within council. Over the course of the years, we have seen some truly innovative ideas come from our students, such as Yorongah State High School's idea to try and power hand dryers with solar panels. Or Mount St Michael's College, who won the People's Choice and Waste Smart Awards for their waste audits. As part of their waste audit, they introduced containers for change, school-wide composting, compostable packaging in the canteen and soft plastics recycling. And last year, there were 70 student representatives over 32 schools and more than 60 projects. At the end of the programme, the Lord Mayor hosts a graduation ceremony where the students present their projects, and I was delighted to join the Lord Mayor in November to see those projects showcased. Mister Chair, it's a fantastic programme, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We now move to the vote on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Mark, City Standards Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 8th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 8th February 2022 be adopted. councillor Mark.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Look, before I start the committee report, can I address the accusation that was levelled at me at this morning's committee meeting that I had not answered a question on notice from a committee? So the question on notice was, first came on the 1st of February, and I was supposed to answer it then, and I had, I apologised and I did not answer it at that point, but I did answer it the following week in chambers. And I'm happy to read out my response here again about what I said. What we did, and I need to make this very clear, we reached out to our current approved panel of suppliers to determine who had additional capacity or capability, and we engaged them for additional assistance on a temporary basis until they can resume. So in other words, there are contractors who work no, no wards.
councillor Johnston, please. councillor Johnston.
No wards. Is that clear enough? We reached out to our contractors who don't only mow for Brisbane City Council, but mow for other areas, and they had additional capacity within their resource pool to come across and do three other wards in our area. There was no contractors removed from any of our wards. So I can think, I consider that matter closed now satisfactorily. We had a presentation and we also had a petition, which I'm happy to leave to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. I now move to the vote on the report, the City Standards Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order, councillor Howard.
I move that the motion regarding the Maruka Bowls Club be taken off the table.
Seconded.
Okay, so we have a procedural motion, that a motion lying on the table be taken off the table. That's the motion before us. It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour of this motion being taken off the table, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. That means we return to the debate on this motion at the point where it was lying on the table. And you have spoken councillor Griffiths, so... Well, you do get a summing up opportunity. You do, you... Point of order. So, so all that's, that's... So councillor Griffiths has spoken. I believe, I recall councillor Howard has spoken.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor.
So just to clarify, is what you're saying that if someone starts speaking on a motion and then there's a procedural motion that the motion lie on the table, that they lose all speaking time that they had remaining?
No. So councillor Griffiths, to your point of order councillor Sri, councillor Griffiths had spoken. It was, yes, it was followed by councillor Howard. At that point, the motion was, there was a procedural motion that the motion lie on the table. And we now pick up the debate now that we've passed a motion that it be taken off the table to other speakers. Yes.
So I'd like to speak on it. Would you mind reading the substantive motion for us again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's been circulated, but I'm happy to read it. From the 17th of August, that this council opposes the sale, demolition or private development of the Brisbane City Council-owned Maruka Bowls Club site and commits to restoring the facility. That was, that was the motion. And we now invite further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on this matter. So it's now been, oh thanks, it's now been, I think, five months since the LMP blocked debate... Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. It's now been five months since the LMP blocked debate on this motion. And having gone to this facility a number of times, and my Lions had dinners there and attended the movie in the park on the weekend, I understand why councillor Griffiths has been very concerned about the future of the Maruka Bowls Club. We know that this administration have form when it comes to demolishing community facilities. And, you know, we've heard the Lord Mayor stand up here glibly and say, "Well, if you want to save the Bowlo, you're too late." Bowls Clubs are more than places where people bowls, they are community hubs. Lions groups meet in them, play groups meet in them, birthdays are held in them. You have mums and bubs groups, you have yoga out on the lawns, you've got walking football, you've got community movies. So Bowls Clubs historically have, yes, been a place of sport, but they've also been important community facilities. And this administration's track record when it comes to demolishing these clubs is now firmly on the record. East Brisbane, despite the fact that council officers didn't recommend it be knocked down, the LMP council, the Shriner council, as they like to call themselves, have determined to knock the Bowls Club at East Brisbane down, which was a valuable community hub. We saw councillor Adams basically capitulate... Capitulation's not the right word, because I don't think she actually tried to stop the Tara Gindi Bowls Club from being demolished. She's never revealed her submission if she ever made one. And we know that she has a very poor track record when it comes to saving council facilities. So this motion, I think, when it was moved last year, was a timely one that this administration sought to block because it called on the administration to fund and restore the facility. Now, it's only because of councillor Griffiths' advocacy on this issue over many, many years that this council has been dragged kicking and screaming to the point where they've given a lease to a community group, they told that community group for months and months and months that they would have to pay for everything. They would have to pay for everything. And it's only in recent weeks that they've kind of rolled over and gone, "Oh, well, you can have a little bit of money to fix this", or "You can have a little bit of money to fix that". And that is a product of the fact that the report into the facility demonstrated how far it had declined and how council had failed to invest in the appropriate capital works to protect the facility. And of course councillor Adams is over there, chat, 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 chat. We know her track record when it comes to Bowls Clubs. She's happy to see them knocked down.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor.
I am not in this motion. Relevance, please.
councillor, councillor Adams, it might be helpful if you don't make any interjections during another speaker. Okay, noted. councillor Johnston.
Thank you. So this administration has been dragged kicking and screaming to this point. Now, I suspect what's going to happen today, and I gather there's something in committee coming up, that councillor Howard is going to stand up and claim all credit. Yeah, she's nodding her head. All credit for this Bowls Club. And I can tell you that she has been dragged kicking and screaming with this administration to this point. The credit is down to the hard-working community volunteers led by Pauline Bell and her team, who have worked tirelessly...
councillor Howard, councillor Adams, please. No chit-chat, please. It'll take conversations outside. councillor Johnston.
Thank you, yes, that's okay. I'm, I, look, doesn't worry me, I'm, I'm, that's fine. I appreciate they don't like what I'm saying, and that's why they're doing it, so I'll just keep going. All credit has to go to Pauline Bell and her team of volunteers, who are the driving force behind this. But let me be clear, the person who has been the advocate for years to ensure this facility has been retained, is properly funded, has supported the community with his time, his money, with a huge amount of effort, is councillor Steve Griffiths. And I honestly think that the political games that have gone on here... Did councillor Howard have the courtesy to notify you she was going to bring the motion off the table today? Oh, okay. All right, okay. All right. He's saying, he's saying yes, they had discussed it. So that's good. But let me be clear, I want to say, before councillor Howard tries to rewrite history and claim this as a win for the LMP, that it is a community-led process and the local councillor for Maruka Ward, who have saved this Bowls Club, who continue to look at all of the events and activities, funding and resources that are needed to continue supporting it. And this administration should hang its head in shame, in shame, for the process that's gone on over the past three or four years of not supporting this club, refusing to fund it and only doing so when they realise the extent of the damage in the clubhouse. And now, and now, there is some money being put in to fix the roof and do some other works, which is what should have happened in the first place. There shouldn't be an argument about fixing community facilities so that they are safe, available for use by the community. Council always has responsibility for the capital works for community facilities, and that should not be put back on volunteer groups, whether they're a Bowls Club or a kindergarten or a group of community volunteers. So I will just say that I know the credit here goes to Pauline Bell, all her volunteers, her executive committee and councillor Steve Griffiths, who have brought this community facility back to life. And from my observations at the movie in the park on Saturday night, it was, it's well, it's well-loved and it's going to be really popular in the community. So thank you, Pauline. Thank you to all of your volunteers behind the scenes. The Lions Club, who will no doubt do lots of barbecues there as they've done. The Greens and Beans lady, I thought she had a nice little business going there. But there's a lot of volunteers, you know, who work very hard in these groups, and I want to say they deserve the credit here, not the LMP. And certainly much of that credit has to go to councillor Steve Griffiths' persistent advocacy on their behalf.
Thank you.
A point of order, not debate, just point of order. Chair, you were wrong. Councillor Griffiths did not in fact debate, nor did councillor Howard of the minutes of that meeting, of the minutes of the meeting in front of me. There was a question to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor answered that question fairly inadequately, let's face it. But then councillor Griffiths moved the suspension of standing orders to move an urgency motion, which was then supported by the LMP. And then as soon as councillor Griffiths started speaking, hadn't finished, councillor Adams, the deputy mayor, then moved it to lie on the tables. Councillor Howard certainly didn't speak on that. And councillor Griffiths should have, by this count, probably nine and a half minutes of his initial debate on the motion, which was supported by the LMP. Sorry, just to help the clerks, it's on page nine and 10 of the minutes of the 17th of August 2021.
Okay, so it starts... So it's councillor Griffiths. To your point of order, councillor Cassidy, this meeting, this motion was adjourned to the end of the meeting. There was 10 minutes of debate. So councillor Griffiths did have 10 minutes of debate before councillor Howard then spoke to it. And then at that point, the motion was moved that it lie on the table. Okay. So, thank you. I believe we're correct in the order of procedures here. councillor Landers, you're speaking to this motion.
Thank you, Chair. And now that we've heard the pre-prepared speech that councillor Griffiths handed to councillor Johnston, let's just get the story straight. When the Maruka Bowls Club ceased operations, council opened the tender for community organisations in late 2019. Councillor Griffiths is aware that council delayed the tender process...
councillor Johnston, I asked for silence while you were speaking. Please, please return the favour. councillor Landers.
Due to the pandemic, and I'm sure that councillor Griffiths would agree that the past few years have been a tough time for our community groups. Council was asked to place the tender process on hold and wait until community groups would be better placed to submit their applications. And so we supported our community groups by doing that. The tenders received were assessed and council awarded the tender to the Third Place Group, which is led by Pauline Bell, a local who has lived in Maruka for more than 15 years. I am advised that Pauline knows the area well, so she's invested in the community and she has a lot of experience delivering community events and programmes in Brisbane. In July, as part of lease negotiations with Third Place Group, council repaired a number of items that were not operational or were damaged to ensure that the site was fit for use. And in line with council's standard lease conditions, maintenance and improvement items are the responsibility of the incoming tenant. These terms were accepted by Third Place Group Incorporated on the 30th of July 2021, and the lease was approved by council on the 28th of September 2021. In advance of Third Place Group occupying the building and thus beginning the transformation of the Maruka Bowls into the Clubhouse Maruka, a range of works were completed by council between the 27th of September and the 17th of December 2021, as agreed with Third Place Group Incorporated. The lease was executed by Third Place Group Incorporated on the 24th of November 2021, with the keys to the club being provided by council to Third Place Group Incorporated on 20 December 2021. And in speaking to councillor Howard about the official opening at the Clubhouse Maruka, it's been great to hear that the mood in the air was excellent as Pauline and her dedicated team began to transform the site into a valued community hub in Maruka. The Clubhouse Maruka has plans for more community events. Active and healthy activities like yoga classes, a new kids' play area, badminton and outdoor cinema sessions, like the one that occurred on the weekend and that councillor Griffiths advised us all this morning, was a great event. This is a great outcome for the community, and it is a shame to see councillor Griffiths playing politics and scaremongering, pretending that he doesn't know what is happening with the club. And you are well aware of the progress that has been made and that the dedicated work of council officers in collaboration with Third Place Group is resulting in the beginnings of a new and exciting community hub for the residents of Maruka. It's unfortunate, councillor Griffiths, that this motion is nothing more than you playing petty politics and refusing to acknowledge a great outcome for the community in your ward. This is a pattern of behaviour we have come to expect from the opposition, and it just goes to show that you cannot believe what Labour says. There were never any plans to sell, develop or demolish this building. So it's really unfortunate that councillor Griffiths was spreading those rumours when he knew we were in advanced discussions with a new tenant about activating the site. And this is why we will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Briefly, and I understand councillor Griffiths will be able to sum up after this as well to respond to some of that garbage from councillor Landers. But what is clear is that the reason councillor Griffiths and I supported this, moved this motion with my support and Labour council's support, is we wanted to get that guarantee. Now, it's great to hear from councillor Landers that the administration will be supporting this because before, before we had that confirmation, all we could go on was this LMP administration's track record of trying to use their private development company to build private unit accommodation in Masgrove Park through CBIC, when councillor Shriner was the chair of the Finance Committee. When councillor Landers talks about the community knowing that this, this building in Maruka wasn't going to be demolished, well, the community, East Brisbane, knew that that facility wasn't going to be demolished until it was going to be demolished. And we know there was politics at play in direct... And we know there was politics at play and directions given to council officers to change those plans at the last minute behind closed doors to demolish a community facility. We know that the LMP and most of these LMP councillors that are here today were part of that LMP administration that sought to allow private development on Sport and Rec Land, to have private developers at Cooperut, have private developers build aged care on Sport and Rec Land. I'm sure you will recall that, Mr Chair, you were in civic cabinet at the time. And they had to backflip on that and they have now.
Point of order, Mr Chair, this is about the Maruka.
Excuse me, point of order to you councillor Howard.
Thank you. I understood that this motion is about the Maruka Bowls Club and I would ask that you draw the speakers to.
Yes, councillor Cassidy, if you can bring it back to the motion for us. Councillor Sri.
Well, councillor Cassidy, take a question.
Councillor Sri.
Sure.
Councillor Cassidy would take a question.
Councillor Cassidy, can you provide any context about other similar facilities and how the administration has dealt with them in the recent past?
Councillor Cassidy, will you take the question?
Thanks very much, Chair, and I thank councillor Sri for his question. I think, I think those examples, those examples I have just given before the LMP tried to silence me there speak volumes. And that therein is the reason that councillor Griffiths, fighting for this facility in his ward, wanted to make sure that its future was guaranteed. Because we've got LMP councillors all across the city supporting private development and the commercialisation of public spaces. We see that all over the place, councillor Sri, through you, Mr Chair, you see it out in King George Square. You see it on Sport and Rec Land, this attempt to not just privatise but develop it. So what councillor Griffiths has tried to do last year and has been successful in doing is making sure that this facility is protected. But when it comes to restoring it, councillor Griffiths will be able to go through this, it is not acceptable for this LMP administration to say to that community group, now council's a big hefty organisation, go into a community group and saying, here, take this lease, take this lease, it's going to be great for you. And if you don't take it, we'll give it to someone else. And then they feel that pressure, they need to take it because they want to deliver services to the community. And then say to them, and then say to them, oh, by the way, you have to spend a million dollars as a community organisation, you have to go and raise a million dollars to provide upkeep, basic upkeep, to make it functional on a council building. I mean, that's just outrageous, councillor Landers, through you, Chair, to get up in this chamber and say, oh, it's now up to the community group to maintain the building. And well, a million dollar bill is not basic maintenance, Chair. And that is going to hamstring that community group and the community that they want to support over in Maruka. And that's, that just adds to this terrible legacy of this LMP administration in the provision of community facilities. If they're not bulldozing them against community wishes, they're putting all these roadblocks in the way of community groups trying to deliver services. And that is a terrible outcome. And I'm sure we're going to get to that in the petition response as well. But this is a great outcome for you, councillor Griffiths, and your community, through you, Chair, in securing this site for many generations to come.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's been a long time coming, this debate. Oh, boy, do I look forward to, what am I going to deliver now? Can I just say that I'm appalled by the LMP? Doesn't shock me anymore what you do, it's just pathetic. And it's even more pathetic that the mayor can't even be in the room. You have, you people have no vision. You have no love of Brisbane and you have no interest in looking after the residents of Brisbane. This facility was built by council that had some vision 50 years ago and it was built for the people of Brisbane. It's actually the biggest Bowls Club in Brisbane, it's four greens. It's been managed by a community group very well for a very long time and it's been where we held the Commonwealth Games. Council, when we had a vision, when we had people who were running this place who actually believed that the residents of Brisbane deserved to do well and be looked after, when we had people out there who believed that we should be providing community facilities for our residents, they are the people that created this facility. And all you've done is run roughshod over the whole process. This, this building was in great disrepair and your own report said that. The own report that you didn't release to any of the lesses applying for the building, they got it after they'd been through the process. That's when they actually found out how much work it actually needs. And I got it through FOI. I mean, what, what does it take? What sort of snivelling slobs actually, actually do that to, to a group of lesses?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Sri.
I just encourage consistency, the rules in this chamber, I think slobs is maybe a little far.
Yeah, councillor Griffiths, can I ask you to?
Yeah, I'll withdraw that, but I, deceitful, deceitful might be better. But let's look at Maruka Bowls Club, let's look at Maruka Bowls Club, it's taken.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Landers.
I would like to uphold the point of order from councillor Sri if you could be consistent with what they call us across the chamber.
I always know, I always know I've got the deputy mayor because she always bites. Can I just go on with?
Yeah, councillor Griffiths.
Can I just say, Maruka Bowls Club has been vacant for three years. And it hasn't just been because of COVID, it's been because of the incompetency of this administration. The club has been run down, it's been extremely poor condition. The kitchen is actually unusable, the greens have been really poorly kept. There've been issues with electricity, gas, the roof leaking, guttering. There's two unusable bars, the floors are rotting. They actually weren't able to get insurance for the building because it was considered a condemned building by eight insurers that they approached. A condemned building, one of our buildings. There's asbestos and there's non-compliance in the, with the accessibility and with the toilets. How's that in comparison to a Bowls Club that closed after Maruka Bowls Club in Sunnybank? Where they got $2 million like that. They got new kitchen, complete renovation, complete new greens, the whole lot done over. It's in an LMP ward. This is the way this council is running. It is so blatant, it is so sickening and residents are so angry about it. And the fact that, I'm not telling residents a lie, I didn't tell them any untruths. I told them the truth and 800 residents signed that petition. Eight hundred residents. And residents are angry, they're angry at the way they're being treated. They're angry that they're paying their rates and you people are saying, oh, actually, it's up to the club to raise a million dollars. It's up to the clubhouse, a community group that has no money, zero money, no money, to find $3,000 a week to run the clubhouse. And you know what? They took it on because they knew they are entering into a, into a very difficult time because they thought, damn it, we're going to show these LMP councillors that we can do this. And that's the view of residents there, that's the view, they're going to, they're going to show you. And they're waiting for a time when you're all gone. And that won't be far away. When there's a change in council and we have an administration who actually wants to give back to the residents of Brisbane, who actually thinks council should be looking after the residents of Brisbane. Not business, not the LMP, but the residents of Brisbane. This is politics at its worst. It's appalling. It is, it is so sad for our city. And the way you've treated these residents, and by the way, there's another building that's failed just across the road from the Bowls Club called the Clifton Hill Scouts. It's actually going to be demolished too. Another building, another facility you're looking after on your watch that has failed. And you're always bragging about being here for so many years and how many people voted for you and this and that. I must admit, I do like telling people how much you brag about that because their reaction is really shock. I am just so concerned here that we have a council that honestly, honestly thinks that this response is okay for the residents of Brisbane. Even an opposition ward, you think this is an okay response for how we use, how we treat a council facility, how we use money from ratepayers of Brisbane? It's not your money, it's not the LMP's money, it's ratepayers' money. Wherever you got this idea that it's you and your little fiefdom, it's not. It's ratepayers' money. It is just, it is just pathetic. I would have really expected a much better response from council. But then again, I know how you've acted for the last 17 years. I know how many times you've done this and how you think, you don't have a conscience, how you think it's okay to do it. It's just politics, we'll just do it. Well, actually, it's wrong. It's wrong, residents know it's wrong. It's wrong, it's wrong for our city, it's wrong for our community facilities and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on the substantive motion which has been circulated, that this council opposes the sale, demolition or private development of the Brisbane City Council-owned Maruka Bowls Club site and commits to restoring the facility. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. The division is on the substantive motion before us regard to the Maruka Bowls Club as read out. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. I don't believe there are. No extensions. Clerks.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being 24 in favour.
Thank you, councillors. Councillor Howard, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 8th of February 2022 be adopted.
Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 8th of February 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the report, as always, I'd like to update the chamber on all of the fantastic things that have been happening in Brisbane. The very first activity was the New Farm National Seniors Bubble and Barbecue at New Farm Park, their very first meeting for the year, 30 of the seniors had a fantastic time and I just want to raise this point in council so that we understand the importance of all of our parks right across Brisbane for the fantastic amenity that they give to all of the, our residents within Brisbane. So they had a fantastic time. Last Friday, I popped along to the clubhouse at Maruka and I do want to commend councillor Griffiths for his welcome of me at that clubhouse. It was really just a drop-in to see how things were happening. It was fantastic to see so many locals there on the night. I then took myself off to the softball for the under-18 girls' season grand final, where they very kindly asked me to throw the first pitch, which was really kind of them because I'm not much of a softballer. And you will be proud to know that I did as proud, I actually got the ball into the mitt of the person that was holding it. So I felt quite pleasant. But I do want to say that this was such a great opportunity. We had Chelsea Falcon, who is a local Brisbane lady and a Brisbane softball representative who had been at the recent Olympic and Australian softball events. And the competition is a development initiative to provide more game experience for the girls in this age group. So it was fantastic to see the amazing work that is happening out there. And councillor Wines, I did you proud in your, in your area there. And as I say, I was rather worried that I would put us to shame, but it was, it was a great night. On Saturday night, we had outdoor cinemas, not only at the clubhouse Maruka, but also at Victoria Park Marambam and it was a fantastic event. We had about 700 people at Victoria Park who went to see The Princess Bride, which I understand through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Griffiths, was the same movie that was on at the clubhouse and they had an equally good attendance. The South Brisbane Federal Band had entertained the, the people before that was able to happen. Is there some noise that I'm hearing?
Carry on councillor Howard.
Oh, it's hard, it's a bit distracting. You know, if anyone on this side speaks, then there's a lot of talk about it.
Councillor Howard, please.
Thank you, thank you. Well, can I just say through you, Mr Chair, that the South Brisbane Federal Band is one that has been around for a very, very long time and provided fantastic entertainment through our bands in the park. On Monday night, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, of course, was the Brisbane Greeters' 10th anniversary. And I want to give a shout out to Greg Gobles, who was the Chair of the Inclusive Brisbane Board when the Brisbane Greeters was formed 10 years ago. And I know that Greg and the Inclusive Brisbane Board were very proud of this initiative and it's so it's proved to be a great love of, of the people of Brisbane. So really want to thank all of the Greeters for their welcoming on Monday night and to see that they had such a fantastic time celebrating their 10 years. And I just want to mention that this morning at the New Farm State School Active School Travel, I attended that, which I think is a fantastic thing for our active school travel people right across Brisbane. And I know that very many councillors in this, in this place are very keen about their active school travel. Moving to the report, we had a presentation on lost property and I want to thank our officer for that presentation, it was a very interesting one. And who would know that there is so much to know about lost property? But I would encourage everyone to look at the report. And of course, the other item for the committee was the petition that we've just had a motion on. And I just want to speak to that petition and particularly to draw councillors to the petition and what it says and also to provide some background to set the record straight from some of the things that we just heard a little bit recently. So, on the 4th of September 2019, a community tender opened. Council provided building condition audit reports, asbestos audit reports and standard lease terms to all organisations that attended the tender open inspection. The tender was advertised with the premises and as-is state and sought maintenance and development plans to be submitted by each of the applicants based on the information council provided as part of the tender process. 2nd of October 2019, the community tender closed. A total of seven applications were received from eligible community organisations. February 2020, two applicants were shortlisted to provide further information. And on March 2020, the two shortlisted applicants requested the tender process to be put on hold to allow them to focus on their responses to the COVID-19 pandemic. August 2020, further information was received by the shortlisted applicants to respond to council's further queries. September 2020, assessment of additional information commenced. October 2020, assessment of additional information complete. Third Place Group provided the most comprehensive response and information to support their application. November twenty twenty, commencement of the tender approval process. Third of December twenty twenty, the community tender process was approved by the delegate. Seventeenth of December twenty twenty, applicants were notified of the outcome. Twenty-eighth of January twenty twenty-one, lease negotiations commenced. Twenty-eighth of February, due date for the lease application to be returned to council. I will now talk about some of the other issues. From the seventh of May twenty twenty-one, Third Place submitted maintenance wish lists, identifying maintenance issues. On the first of July, council wrote requesting that the organisation give us further information. On the sixteenth of July, there was further information about the property insurance. Councillor Griffiths is quite right, difficult to get insurance. A lot of organisations across this city had that same problem. On the twenty-first of July twenty twenty-one, the Third Place Group submitted public liability insurance coverage certificate of currency and we were able to then progress further with some of the work that we were doing. So I'm not going to keep going because you can see from what I've just said, there were continual, continual negotiations and work that was carried on with the group. And can I just say to you, Mr Chair, that the petition sets out very clearly what I've just said. In mid twenty nineteen, the doors closed. In relation to the condition of the facility, council records show that a contractor has attended the site a minimum of thirty times since July twenty nineteen for mowing and maintenance works. Between November twenty twenty and March twenty twenty-one, council conducted further maintenance works such as the repair of water leaks, installation of backflow prevention devices and tamper-proof taps and lighting repairs. On the first of July twenty twenty-one, as part of lease negotiations with Third Place Group, council offered to repair a number of items that were not operational or damaged to ensure the site was fit for use. All other maintenance and improvement items are the responsibility of the incoming tenant and this was accepted by Third Place Group on the thirtieth of July twenty twenty-one and the lease was approved by council on the twenty-eighth of September twenty twenty-one. In advance of the successful tenant taking up the occupation, taking occupation of the building, a range of works were completed by council between the twenty-seventh of September and the seventeenth of December twenty twenty-one, as agreed with Third Place. Always, as agreed with Third Place. The lease was executed by Third Place on the twenty-fourth of November twenty twenty-one with the keys to the club being provided by council to Third Place Group on the twentieth of December twenty twenty-one. All of that very clearly set out in the petition response. Very disappointingly, the local councillor did not support that recommendation. So I just want to finish by saying Pauline Bell is an amazing human being and I, I just cannot understand why the politics has to be played when we have a fantastic group that has a wonderful, wonderful site that we are all working very hard to, to, to support. So I would just like to commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Oh yes, always worth replying to, to that. So it's interesting. I suppose we heard the list of little jobs they've done on taps and fixing pipes. What I would have liked the councillor to say is how much was spent on the building. My understanding about a hundred and fifty thousand by council. That pales into insignificance when you look at the Sunnybank Bowls Club, they had two million dollars spent on it. Sunnybank Bowls Club in an LMP electorate, and I see the councillor over there laughing and smiling. Oh no, change, change the expression now. So we had two million dollars spent on the Sunnybank Bowls Club. Two million dollars.
To the report, please, because.
I'm just, I'm just doing the comparison.
I don't believe Sunnybank is mentioned in the, in the petition response.
It's a comparison and it's a huge comparison for the residents of Brisbane to know. I want the residents of Brisbane to know. Maruka, a hundred and fifty thousand to fix up a club that's falling apart. Sunnybank LMP area, two million dollars, like that. And shorter timeframe. Maruka, three years old, we had this, excuse me, then this happened, then this happened, then this happened. Three years the facility was vacant. God knows how many calls my office had to make to get the grass cut, to get graffiti removed, to get, to get broken glass replaced. And then you're claiming it as, hey, look what we did. Just, it's just astounding how you rewrite history. It's even more astounding, they actually don't get the concept that this isn't owned by you. This is not owned by the LMP. It's owned by the residents of Brisbane. We should be doing this up for the residents of Brisbane. We should have given, and I hear all this praise of Pauline, Pauline's fantastic. But, and her group of volunteers are fantastic. Now I think they've got several hundred members. They're fantastic. They're doing a great job. We should be in there supporting them wholeheartedly. What we should have given them is a facility that was renovated. We should have given them a facility that had a new kitchen in it. We should have given them a facility that had upgraded accessible toilets. Wow, I can't even believe I'm saying that. We should have done that and then we give it to the group and their job is to raise the three thousand dollars a week it is to run the facility. But what we've given them, and I love how you throw it back on them, well, they signed it, they agreed to it. I'm also aware, and I won't repeat it, but I am aware of some private conversations between a councillor over there and Pauline in relation to the building. And I am, am aware of, of the advice that that councillor gave. So in relation to, in relation to this, we have missed the mark. The administration has missed the mark. And yeah, you can be proud and go home tonight and have your drink and go, ha, ha, we did them over at Maruka. But what you've done is you've done residents over. And, and you, you've just let people of Brisbane down based on petty politics. It is based on petty politics. And I know we have councillors over there who don't support bowls clubs, who actually have gone out and we've, we've had, I know we've had, the, the Wellis Hills, the Tarragindy Bowls Club has actually gone. It's going to be rebuilt, but the sport and rec land is all being, the, the sport and rec land is all being developed on it for a high rise. That was done with the great support of the deputy mayor. We've had East Brisbane, where this administration tried to actually sell off and let Brisbane Housing Company, or not Brisbane Housing Company, it's our own private firm of developers, develop a high rise on it. There was you guys at Christmas time. And then there was East Brisbane, which you've allowed to be demolished. You want to be demolished. You have form with our bowls clubs. You have form with our community facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, just very briefly. Unlike councillor Sandy Landers, I didn't have a speech written for me. Councillor Griffiths handed me the motion and I just wanted to put on the record that the reason that I know what's happening in these areas is because I visit them. I'm invited to go and I go. I suspect councillor Landers has never been to Maruka and doesn't know anything about these areas, but I do know Pauline quite well as well and she does do a wonderful job. But what I want to say about the petition is, it is only because of the advocacy of these people that this has happened. And it is so important to recognise that this administration gave a Rolls Royce run to an LNP ward.
Yes.
And in one of the most economically disadvantaged parts of our city, it has, as councillor Howard proudly outlined, made a volunteer community group jump through complex paperwork, complex financials, stress over funding, stress over how they might be able to do things because they do have drive and determination. They do want to make Maruka a better place. They do care about Maruka. All these things are true. But instead of recognising and supporting that, this council put obstacle after obstacle after obstacle in their way. They found two million dollars to fix Sunnybank just a few kilometres down the road and it's taken petitions, motions in council to get the Maruka Bowls Club a hundred and fifty? I haven't, I haven't heard councillor Howard jumping up and down to get crumbs. Yeah, I haven't heard councillor Howard jumping up and down denying that. While I'm pleased that they're going to support this, that they supported the motion, it means now that they'll have to come up with the full amount of funding to fix all of the issues at that club because they're publicly saying they support its restoration. So that's a good thing. But never let it be forgotten, never ever let it be forgotten that this LNP administration funded a bowls club just down the road in an LNP area with millions of dollars and hands out pennies to a community group that they know, in their own words, have the ability to run this place, have the knowledge to run this place and have the determination to run it. And support. And I, I actually think the LNP should be ashamed of themselves that they have done this, instead of stumping up the cash needed to fix it. And I can tell you now that it's the same in pretty much every other place in my ward. There's community facilities that, you know, waiting for the, the half a dozen group of artists to be restumped. I mean, council's aware of the report that says the building is falling over. So I hope there's some money coming to fix that. There's massive drainage problems. You've got walls cracking in the Country Women's Association. Council won't do anything to fix that. It's the same in every other non-LNP ward in this city. Maybe not councillor Shree's, he's probably got Rolls Royce facilities. But I can tell you now, there is a, there is a very big problem in other areas. And I just want to say again to councillor Steve Griffiths, you should take some credit out of this. You've pushed very hard with your community to get a good result here today. And again, as I said earlier, to Pauline and her team, well done and I know you'll do a great job. And to the LNP, wise up. Don't just hand out cash in your own areas. Make sure you're looking after all of Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. I'd just like to remind the chamber that there were seven applicants. So it's not just one group that applied for this, seven. And it went through a very robust area. I'm not going to go back and repeat. It's not going to do any good because nobody listens. Let me just talk about going forward. Can I say that we supported the motion about opposing the sale, demolition and private development of the Brisbane City Council-owned Maruka Bowls Club site and commitment to restoring the facility because it's been done. It's been done. Going forward, council will continue to work hand in hand with Third Place Group as we do with hundreds of community groups and support and sporting clubs that call our public spaces home. Community organisations like Third Place Group act in the public interest in our groups we are only too proud to support. Our dedicated team of sport and recreation officers work tirelessly, and I'll say that again, work tirelessly with community groups across Brisbane to ensure that these organisations have the support that they need from council. And this level of support will continue to be provided to Third Place Group in their mission to transform the Maruka Bowls Club into the clubhouse Maruka. Council's strong investment into the site coupled with the ongoing support of our council team will ensure that Third Space Group are well supported in their new home as they deliver recreation activities for the residents of Maruka and beyond. So a number of site works will be undertaken in conjunction with the Third Place Group in twenty twenty-two, meaning an even better facility for the Third Place Group, giving the residents of Maruka more to see and do across Brisbane. And I recommend it to the chamber.
Thank you councillors. We now move to the vote on the, this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Howard and councillor Adams. Please ring the bells. Thank you councillors. The division is on the vote for the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no and raise your hands. No extensions. Clerk.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and seven against.
Thank you. Declare that motion carried. Councillor Cunningham, the Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the eighth of February twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday eighth of February twenty twenty-two be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from the City Resilience Branch on engagement with culturally and linguistically diverse communities. As many of us in this place know, Brisbane is a diverse city. Thirty-six percent of residents were born outside of Australia and twenty-eight percent, more than one in four, speak a language other than English at home. It's imperative that council's communication is accessible to all, especially when it relates to critical information about disaster management. So we're working with the Red Cross, multicultural radio station 4EB and the Ethnic Communities Council of Queensland to address this. We're developing a community education and awareness programme in cold adapted formats and understand, to help them understand local risk and what to do before, during and after a severe weather event. There've also been another, a number of workshops with 4EB broadcasters to upskill people in interpreting information from the Bureau of Meteorology, which I myself need to attend. During the meeting, councillor Strunk mentioned how local councillors and ward officers are a great source of local information from, from key community leaders. And I think it's a really good point and one which I'm sure that the team will continue to take him up on. It's vital that we partner with our diverse communities and work side by side to ensure the safety of all residents in Brisbane. And I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further, any further speakers? No further speakers. We now put this motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention, I draw to your attention the notified, notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Davis, this is in your name. Will you move it, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this council notes a significant growth happening within the western suburbs of Brisbane culminating in the need for a new school within the suburb of Tuong. We acknowledge that the Queensland Government has selected the council-owned Tuong Bowls Club in Perrin Park as a location for the new school and calls on the Queensland Government to first purchase and then gift to council at no cost new land to offset the land required for the new school.
Thank you. It has been, is there a seconded?
Seconded.
Councillor Mackay.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis. He's just putting his card in. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that this motion be put before council. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In December last year, Minister Grace Grace announced that the state Labor Government would acquire the Tuong Bowls Club and replace the community green space within New a new vertical state school. But what was not in the ministerial statement was a solid commitment from the state Labor Government to offset the loss of that parkland. Mr Chair, the Shriner Council recognises the value of education in our community and we recognise that the state government has a role to play in delivering educational facilities. However, green space is an equally valuable future asset for the local community. And whilst acknowledging that the new primary school responds to increased demand, rate payers and residents should not have their green spaces treated as a land bank for the Department of Education to rate at will and certainly not without concrete commitment to offset the loss of parkland. Our position is clear, the state government should identify an equivalent footprint of land, acquire that land and then gift that land back at no cost to the city to compensate for the loss of this valuable green space. Mr Chair, it is not sufficient, nor is it an appropriate principle, as the state member for Maywire has suggested, that council will receive considerable financial compensation for this site. Firstly, Mr Berkman has provided no certainty, nor is he in any position to provide any such certainty that any amount of financial compensation will be forthcoming. Frankly, I was somewhat bemused that he even made the suggestion. But this was not as bemusing as the deafening silence from the Labor Opposition about the future of the former Tuong Bowls Club, considering their noise about another former Bowls Club in, in Brisbane, but more about that later. We all know that land in the inner city is at a premium, the state has to act in this regard. Council would of course provide any technical advice required to assist the state government in selecting an appropriate location for the new green space. But the state must make the commitment to replace this green asset and commit to a timeline. This should be part of the overall development plan of the school. The delivery of the replacement green space should be able to be welcomed by the community as part of the delivery of the project. At the time of the announcement last year, Minister Grace stated that the Department of Education was committed to liaising with stakeholders, including Brisbane City Council. And yet the only correspondence we've received from the department came in last week. In the department's letter, they acknowledged things like site constraints and references to significant upgrades to active transport and external roads, but nothing that addressed the loss of green space at the Bowls Club site. The school is a state government project and it is only fair and reasonable to expect that state government should also be responsible for ensuring the replacement parkland. But what is even more surprising than the minister having nothing to say about the loss of this green space is the complete silence from her Labor Party colleagues in this council, particularly given that the Labor Opposition have had a great deal to say about another Bowls Club building in the inner city that has not been home to Bowls in over ten years. But when it comes to the Tuong Bowls Club, all you hear is crickets. But we know Labor has well and truly abandoned the western suburbs. It appears, Mr Chair, that the Labor Opposition doesn't support additional green space being created in Mowbray Park, but they do support their friends at One William Street dropping a school on top of parkland in the inner western suburbs without providing any equivalent green space to compensate the loss to the community. Mr Chair, a cynic might think that their true interest in Mowbray Park is nothing more than a vehicle for pure politicking. They have been quiet as church mice with regards to the selection of the former Tuong Bowls Club site as the location for the new primary school. But their true interest in Mowbray Park might be more about protecting a federal Labor Member in the light of a forthcoming election. Perhaps, Mr Chair, some Bowls Clubs are more equal than others. In contrast to the apparent political cynicism of Labor, we have the confusion of the Green State Member calling for council to purchase the former ABC site. Mr Chair, replacing the green space is the responsibility of the state. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, despite council's objection, the site was sold by the RADA Labor Government back in 2013. Prior to the sale, council approached the federal government requesting they gift the land to the residents of Brisbane. The request was rejected and the property was sold for $20 million. The land went back on the market last year and sold for $43.5 million, and of course there's been significant growth in property values since then. If Mr Berkman truly believes that the former ABC site is a feasible option, then he should be lobbying the state government to convince them to put the funding up as a matter of priority. And I wish him well. But history shows that Mr Berkman does much talking and no delivering and simply rides on the coattails of others. This is a fellow, and councillor Mackay can attest to this, who is renowned for falsely claiming credit for projects conceived, funded and delivered by council to cover for the fact that he has no ability to deliver anything at all. Mr Chair, as the Lord Mayor says, the council he leads is committed to the provision of better and more green space. The Shriner Council supports investment in upgrading, improving and enhancing our parkland because green space is absolutely precious. Therefore, Mr Chair, it is a reasonable proposition for the rate payers of Brisbane to expect that the state government step up and identify and gift to council the equivalent green space to account for that lost by the construction of the new vertical state school at Tuong. I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to contribute to the debate on this motion and I've never heard so much rubbish in my life. No, I'm not kidding, councillor.
Allow the speaker to be heard, silence please.
Now, the councillor that's moved this motion here today with the support of the councillor for the Walter Taylor Ward was, we all remember, a minister in the Newman Government. A government sitting around the cabinet table and a government that flogged off school ovals to private developers, sought to close down the Evidant Park High School, which I think is in your ward, councillor Davis through you, Mr Chair. And, and when this, when this was raised over the last couple of weeks, we heard from the Lord Mayor, who is absent of course now from this debate, that, oh, no, no, the LNP council's not against, not against schools, they're not against new public schools, not against public schools, they just don't want this one. Well, we know the track record of councillor Davis in her time in government was to slash and burn schools. And that's seeping back in now, that's seeping back in here, Mr Chair, when it comes to this motion before us today. And this motion is purely political. This motion is, is an attempt by the LNP to distract from their shocking track record when it comes to community clubs. Now, the Bowls Club, I think councillor Davis tried to intimate that the Bowls Club's thriving there at Tuong at the moment, but we know that it was forced to shut its doors in 2019 due to financial hardship. Now, that's a familiar story, that's a familiar story for Bowls Clubs in Brisbane under this LNP administration. Where was the LNP mayor when this club was struggling? Where was he? Now, apparently, the LNP and the Lord Mayor cares about the Tuong Bowls Club as a council facility, they didn't care when it was suffering and under financial hardship and was forced to close down. Now, the Tuong Bowls Club's another prime example of this LNP administration's utter neglect for suburbs and community clubs. And we heard that similar story from councillor Griffiths earlier today about the Maruka Bowls Club. We of course see that they, the LNP administration, when it comes to that club, refused the repairs to that community facility which it owns, instead putting a $1 million burden on those new tenants. That's an appalling treatment of Brisbane residents by this LNP-run council. Now, why on earth is a tenant responsible for the maintenance and upgrade of a council facility? And we've just heard, heard that debate. Now, the, the LNP mayor certainly has form in this department. Now, when he was a member of the civic cabinet in previous LNP administrations, they tried to flog off space in Mowbray Park in East Brisbane to CBIC for a high-rise development. They are not just trying, but they are actually bulldozing the former East Brisbane Bowls Club, which is currently being used daily by thousands of local young artists and creatives. And they want to replace that with the bitumen car park. Now councillor Davis tried to say that that would be enhancing green space, but we all know that is going to be pure bitumen. Now, the LNP is neglecting our community clubs or cutting their funding if they're not doing that, they're bulldozing them, Chair, and replacing them with car parks. Now, the state government want to turn this former Bowls Club site into a school, as we've heard from their announcements, to benefit hundreds and thousands of Brisbane families in the western suburbs into the future. But this LNP council is what, what I'm starting to get the feeling of, last week was saying they just had some concerns and now sort of setting it up to fight against the development of a new school in the western suburbs as well, which is true to, true to form, true to form for the LNP and particularly, particularly a councillor who was a Newman Government Minister, who made the decision to sell off state schools and close down state schools when she was in government. This is, this motion before us today in this, this fake fight is all about politics and councillor Davis made that very clear. So right now, we know, we know there are negotiations going on between Brisbane City Council and the state government, that's happening at officer level. So the negotiation around the purchase of this site is currently underway. And if the Lord Mayor, if the LNP mayor, who's supposed to be so-called leader of this team, there's Rabble over there, Chair, doesn't know that, those conversations are currently underway, then that is actually really quite concerning. However, what would be more worrying, if the Lord Mayor did know about these negotiations but is still, still ordering this motion be put to council to jeopardise the outcome of that, to play politics with the outcome of those negotiations which are currently happening between council officers and the state government department people about the purchase of this site. So we have no problem calling on the state government to offer compensation for the loss of land. You know, Labor councillors would certainly at this stage of the negotiation like to give those council officers who are working very hard on the, on behalf of the people of Brisbane in those negotiations, the chance to do that before we see LNP councillors coming in here and meddling away and potentially jeopardising that process, all for a small, a small political point scoring game. So we're certainly not going to participate in this political stunt today before us and it is just that. I mean, we've heard over the last few weeks, example after example after example where this LNP administration will only get involved in these situations where there are political points to be scored. When it comes to saving genuinely used community spaces like at East Brisbane, like at Maruka, they don't really care. But when it comes to picking a fight with and trying to whack the state government, they will argue against the provision of state schooling. And that's what this is all about. I think coming full circle, we can read between the lines on this side of the chamber. When the LNP put up the councillor, who was the minister in the Newman Government that sat around that, that cabinet table and made those decisions to close state schools, to sack teachers, to sack frontline workers, to sell off state schools to private developers, then, then we know really what this motion is all about. It's a values issue for the LNP, they don't really care about the provision of pub, good public schooling, and they're going to do anything they can at any level of government to get in the way of that, and that's really quite sad. That's nice, that's nice councillor Hammond, thank you for that. And that is really quite, that's really quite sad councillor Davis through.
Councillor Cunningham, please. Councillor.
That is really quite sad councillor Davis through you, Mr Chair, that you would bring those bad old politics of the Newman days that you were turfed out on, you lost your seat because of those decisions you made.
Councillor Hammond, please. Councillor Hammond.
Those decisions that councillor Davis made when she was a state member for Aspli and a minister in the Newman Government are coming back, they're coming back in, they're seeping back into this council, and I, Chair, certainly thought she was a lot better than that.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers? Oh, sorry, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the motion. I will be supporting the motion and I, I guess I, I kind of welcome the LNP getting on board with this struggle, which is certainly something that the Greens have been raising concerns about for a while now. The, I think the, the argument that, the argument that the state government should be providing enough money to create new green space is, is pretty self-explanatory to me. Michael Berkman has been saying that for a while as, as well, he's, I've been quite consistent that any resumption of parkland needs to be offset by the creation of new parkland in the area. I think it was interesting to see the LNP administration try and position or argue for the position that the state government should provide the parkland, whereas actually I think I'd rather they give a whole chunk of money to council and council just sort out the parkland because we're, we do a better job of it, we're more efficient at that stuff than the state government. And so I'm not advocating this as a party political position or anything like that, but thinking about it kind of objectively, would I, would I rather have the state government say, okay, we're taking this chunk of land in Tuong and here's your park over here, just deal with it? I'm not sure that that's really what I'd like to happen, I'd prefer that they give us a significant chunk of money and that we as the council can decide, okay, this is the best way to create new green space. So I think, I think reasonable people, reasonable people can disagree about that. The crucial question will be how much compensation does the state government actually pay council for the land in question? And I'd be interested in whether anyone from the LNP can shed any light on that. Certainly, I, I understand the state government increased the budget for the school by $30 million recently, which was apparently partly for increased construction costs and design changes and partly to set aside a figure to compensate council for the land. I'm pretty outraged that these discussions and negotiations are happening behind closed doors. If Brisbane City Council and the state government are currently haggling over how much the land is worth and how much it should be acquired for, that should be out in the public realm. They're both public entities debating over how taxpayer resources and money will be spent. It, it really shouldn't be a secret negotiation where they do some deal behind the scenes and decide how much the land is, is going to be sold for. That should be an open and transparent conversation. My big concern is that the state government won't give council enough money for the land and then that council will then have a difficult time of it being able to afford a similar site in the area that can be created as new parkland, and I'm quite critical of the state government for that. But I, I do also feel a little bit sceptical or dubious of the way this issue has been approached by the LNP. Because like we've, I've heard the references to East Brisbane Bowls Club and I, I don't think that is a, a fair comparison because I, I do think there is a very active local community there that wants that Bowls Club preserved, quite separate to the future of Backbone as a community organisation, and I hope councillor Davis and councillor Howard will reflect on that further. I know there's been some commentary that Backbone's got a relocated site and the Bowls Club in East Brisbane isn't needed anymore, it very much is, and there definitely is a local community there that wants that site preserved. But putting that aside and thinking about the Tuong site, there's another political manoeuvre going on here, which is that the LNP are terrified of losing the seat of Ryan. And, and this particular issue has, has exposed, I, I think, a strategic area, particularly on the part of councillor Mackay, but perhaps by the party more generally, in that the LNP is, is at risk of being perceived as anti-school. You've got, you've got an electorate that, you've got an electorate there that is very keen to see a new public school delivered in the area. We saw councillor Mackay campaign very strongly against the Indrapilly site, fair enough, maybe not the best site, without offering any alternatives though, and then create, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong councillor Mackay, I haven't been following your commentary closely enough, but it, it seemed like the LNP were saying, no, we don't want it here and we don't have any alternative suggestions for a better site. And so in that context, I think there's a danger for the LNP to be perceived as opposing the public school in general. And this more nuanced conversation about the importance of securing enough public green space getting lost in the static. The, I, I must say it was interesting because I've been through a similar experience in my own electorate where the state government was considering to put a, a public, a new public high school on or near to Davies Park, and there was a quite serious conversation about acquiring land adjacent to Davies Park and co-opting or monopolising part of the Davies Park oval. And I, as a single Greens councillor, was able to push back on that. And I, as a single Greens councillor, was able to push back on that. And I guess I wondered that if I was able to do that, why isn't councillor Mackay able to do that in his electorate? But part of the reason that we got a slightly better outcome was that I, as a councillor, was willing to support the acquisition of privately owned sites for the creation of a new school. And I think this is one of the challenges that the LNP still hasn't worked out and keeps backing itself into a corner on, is that it seems like the LNP wants a new school but doesn't want to take any land off private residences or private businesses. And that's a really tricky thing to do in the inner city. But if the LNP is saying, we don't want the government to take any public parkland or public community facilities, and we don't have any other sites that we really want acquired, you're not really leaving a lot of options for creation of a new school. And so I guess I'd be interested in hearing a direct response from councillor Mackay later as to whether is councillor Mackay supportive of compulsorily acquiring residential homes or businesses as a potential alternative site for a school? And if you're not supportive of taking people's homes or taking people's private businesses to create a new school, then where exactly did you want the school to go? And I'm not saying that to be provocative, but it does seem like, for me at least, there are sometimes good arguments for compulsorily acquiring privately owned sites in the inner city so we can deliver essential public facilities. I'm on the public record as saying that, given if there's been enough public consultation and there's been enough notice and plenty of advance notice, I think there is a case for taking privately owned sites, not just to create new public schools, but also to create new public parkland. But it seems like the Labor state government were afraid of a backlash if they took private land. They were worried that the LNP would have a go at them for taking people's homes or taking people's private properties. And so to avoid that backlash of compulsorily acquiring private property, the state-Labor government made the calculation that it would be more politically viable to take a public site. That's, I'm not defending that decision, but that seems to be what's happening here behind the scenes. And there's a lot of party politics here, and a lot of us-first them between Liberal council and the Labor state government. But it does seem like there's an underlying conversation there that no one's really having in the open, which is simply about, are we willing to take privately owned land to create either new schools or new public parkland? And I think there are sometimes cases when we should be willing to do that. I do think Michael Burkeman, the state MP, is right to be calling for acquisition of the ABC site. And I think the council is right to be calling on the state government to provide enough compensation to provide a new park of similar quality in a similar area. This should really be about a value of compensation that provides replacement value, rather than just saying, okay, this is how much that block of land is worth, which is currently zoned, community facilities or parkland or whatever, and that's what it's worth, therefore this is what we're giving you. The state government should be providing council enough money to actually buy a high-quality site for new public parkland in the area. But the council is really complicit in this, because it's the council that has been continually rezoning private land for a long time now for high-density development, and drastically, putting drastic upward pressure on property values in the area. So I think as well, while the council is right to put a bit of pressure on the state government, the council needs to recognise that it's the one responsible for the ridiculously high land values in the inner city. It is Brisbane City Council that is responsible for the fact that the ABC site is now so highly valued. If the council wanted, it could theoretically rezone the entire ABC site for parkland, reduce its value, and then acquire it. That's an option that's open to Brisbane City Council. The private property owner might not like it very much, because their property value would drop a bit. But the legislation gives council the power to do that. And so I think it's a little lazy of council to point the finger exclusively at the state government, rather than collaborating to actually solve this problem and provide much-needed public green space for the inner west.
Councillor Sri, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the notified motion. When you visit the Indrapilly State School for a morning assembly, you'd think the student body looks quite small and quite manageable. It's not until you're told the real story that the problem sinks in. That school assemblies need to be conducted by year level. There are so many students, they cannot fit in the school hall at the same time. At Ironside State School, there are so many kids that lunch is taken on a split roster. There is no doubt that a new primary school is needed in the western suburbs. Tonight, in this debate, you're likely to hear some silly little jibes from those opposite. You've already heard some twisted, some sanctimonious little tales about how they want to save one venue, but are prepared to see another one demolished. I'm on the record as not supporting a new school to go at the Indrapilly State High School, nor on the grounds of the old Tuwong Bowls Club. I have written at great length about a suggested alternative location for the new primary school, so I won't go into that today. You can Google it.
Point of order, Chair? Point of order, councillor Sri.
Would councillor Mackay just clarify what to Google?
You're asking to ask a question, and councillor Mackay said no.
I'm just going to clear up two things very quickly. This club that councillor Matic and I attended the last drinks for in December 2019, it went broke with debts of $700,000 as a result of the 2011 floods. This council put hundreds of thousands of dollars into that club to try and save it. And now they want to put a school on this flood zone. And I should commend councillor Cassidy, Chair, because he seems to have an inside ear to the minister, because apparently he knows that council officers are negotiating a sale. I bet that came as news to the Lord Mayor and to the Chair. What I will go into tonight is the need for Turinga residents to have access to green and open space. Our community is changing.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
As a result of the Brisbane and Queensland population growth, our community sees one home turn into many. This densification is why we need a new school. This densification is driving the want and the need for better, usable green space. Does it make sense to take a community facility and open space to build a new school? To me, no. To education department officers in the Queensland government, yes. But they don't live here. They don't appreciate how valuable the open space is. They do cite examples of vertical schools with play areas on the roof, which is what's going to happen in Turinga. My contention is quite simple. The state government is going to build on a council-owned community facility, so the state government should offset the loss by providing a similar amount of land and facility in the local area. Is that not sensible? Not reasonable? Council has had a longstanding policy of no net loss of green space. We've articulated that position to the state government, and they have still decided to go ahead with taking this land despite the value it has in our community. But now the state has made their decision. It is imperative that we find a way to ensure our community still has access to open space and community facilities. I'm asking all councillors to support this motion today, because I think it's the right thing to do for Brisbane. And just think if this was to happen in your local area, if the state government resumed a park for a state government project, don't you think a growing area needs and values that space and would demand the state government to find a solution? That's what this motion is asking for. It's not demanding a particular site or a particular amount of money. In fact, I'm told council officers are more than willing to assist in providing technical support to the state government in this outcome. Our motion not only allows the state government to investigate options they might identify in the local area, it also sends a strong message that they need to replace what they are taking. So I would ask all councillors to support this motion. While we're calling on the state government to offset this resumption, others are taking a different tack, which is what I need to put on record. The local state government member has taken tips from the famous illusionist David Copperfield. Look, a distraction. After advocating for the new school to go on the local bowls and green space, he now has no interest in securing funding from the state government to deliver an offset for the loss. And if that's not bad enough, he also bragged on Facebook that he asked the state government to consider using the park across the road from the Bowls Club too. It's like something out of Ripley's Believe It or Not, or MTV's Punked. For a long time, the Greens' political party have said and done whatever they want, thinking there would be no consequences, because they never have to worry about getting into government. Like claiming credit for delivering two green bridges, or claiming credit for a train station that was funded before they were elected. But the Greens have an answer for the Tuwong Bowls situation. Let's make it someone else's problem. Let's make it council's problem. He's supporting a school in a council park, so he's saying council should offset that loss. He never, ever calls on the state government to provide the offset. Is he for real? Does he have a conscience? Because it seems to me about deflecting to someone else, a problem he helped create. Let's talk about funding the offset for a minute. One Green, a councillor, has railed against offsets. I heard it myself. And the Greens' political party famously criticised offsets as magic pudding calculations. And that is a quote from The Guardian, so it must be true. My second all-time favourite movie is Ferris Bueller's Day Off. Remember that scene when the economics teacher drones on and finishes with, anyone? Something DOO Economics? Voodoo Economics? Voodoo Economics is an unrealistic economic policy, like how the Greens wanted tax developers 75% and have more affordable housing at the same time. And another green doozy has popped up. The state MP, yes, the same one who's got himself in a sticky situation, has called on council to, quote, "use the funds from the sale of the Bowls Club to purchase the ABC site for a public riverside park", quote. Warning: voodoo economics. The ABC site, as you heard, sold last year for more than $43 million. The little old Tuwong Bowls Club is built in a flood zone. As I mentioned before, they went broke owing $700,000 because of the flood. It can never be used for development. How much is it worth? To our community, it is priceless. But when it comes to a cash value for the state government, well, it's not going to compare to Riverside. Would the commercial value of the Tuwong Bowls Club match the commercial value of the ABC site? No reasonable person would accept that premise. Note, of course, even when land is compulsorily resumed by council, the landowner would have to receive fair commercial compensation, which in this case would have to be in excess of $43 million. What's worse is the state member has not secured a single cent in compensation from the state for council for the loss of this open space. He has completely shirked his responsibility for his community, and it's disappointing to see. Why do I get the feeling that the Greens are taking council and the ratepayers of Brisbane for a ride? This is a very, very simple equation. The state government is building on a council-owned land and removing a community facility, so the state government should provide a similar facility in the local area. Council never promised to buy the ABC site, and for someone to twist the words to say that we did is reprehensible. No wonder there's an integrity crisis on George Street. In summary, I'll restate the fundamental Shriner council tenet. We do not support development resulting in a net loss of parkland. This includes the Tuwong Bowls Club site and its surrounds. Support this motion, and let's have the state provide a fair offset for what they are taking from council.
Well, here we go again. The LNP have brought a motion to this council that is attempting to attack the state government, but they've brought it with a tryst today. There's a little twist on it. Now they've decided that Michael Burkeman is public enemy number one. And again, what they are moving here today says more about their own problems than it does about the issue. Now, I want to start with this. At no point has councillor Davis outlined council's position. She's on the record about a year ago, saying that she wanted the equivalent transfer of land from the state government. Where are negotiations up to? Are we selling them the land? Has it come through this council for a decision? Is it being compulsorily resumed by the state? Why has this matter not come to council, and why have councillors not been informed of our council's position when it comes to the disposal of this land? Because it seems apparent to me that the LNP councillors, despite what councillor Mackay, the tightrope, is trying to walk, it strikes me that councillor Davis has already written this land off. She has written it off. We've heard the negotiations are going on behind the scenes. What negotiations? How much money is the state government offering? If anything, are they offering a land swap, as councillor Davis wanted? Anyone? 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 We're not getting a single legitimate bit of information about this motion. That speaks volumes about what's going on. Worse still, councillor Mackay, the local councillor, has stood up and says, he has a position, but he's just not going to tell anybody what that position is. Now, you would think that when you come to council to debate an issue about which you are passionate, about which you think is wrong, that there is a problem, you'd think you'd happily go on the record and say, I'm not in favour of this because of this. Councillor Mackay has not done that either. So let's be clear. What he did today was stand up and say the state member, who is a Green, has shirked his responsibility to get money for council from the state government. Now, Michael Burkeman is not the councillor. He's a Green state member. It's not his job to get money from council. I think councillor Mackay needs to stand up and start saying what he thinks should happen, because he's not done that. So the person who is shirking their responsibility here today is councillor Davis and councillor Mackay, who brought what they think is a tricky little political motion to this place without council's position being on the record. Now, let's be clear, councillor Davis. Has the state made us an offer? What is it? Are you going to bring it here to council for us to debate it, so we know what's going on? Are we talking about dollars? Are we talking about a land swap? What is happening? Because I don't know. No one's told me. And I think it's appalling that you want to bring a tricky little motion in here like this without us having a proper discussion about the serious issues, which I'm now going to put on the record from my point of view. This site is incredibly flood-prone. I don't believe it is necessarily the right site for a new school. And let me be clear, we heard from the councillors earlier today about how they've gone into bat with the state government because of drainage issues on the Beams Road overpass, and how they couldn't possibly, possibly let it go with the state government because there might be houses flooded. Well, let me tell you, if council gives up this land for a school to be built, the school will be flooded. And having numerous schools in my ward flooded in 2011, I can tell you now it is massively distressing to families and to the kids to see their school like that. Now, it's clearly the state pursuing this, but I'd like to know what council's position is. What are we doing about the drainage and the flooding issues? How will that impact on the park itself? How will it impact on surrounding areas? Have we even raised those issues with the state government? Is the depot going to be able to stay, or does that go too? I don't even know how much land we're talking about. This matter's never been brought to council for debate. And what are they bringing today? A tricky little motion that's trying to blame somebody else for the fact that they're not openly discussing this issue in council. We're not talking about the real issues. We're not talking about what happens to the depot. I know the Lord Mayor's come strolling back in. He'll probably hop up and say something about it. But let me be clear. This is just, this is just a tricky little political motion that is designed to try and wedge the Greens, I presume. I think, I know, it's a bit weird, isn't it? They haven't got it right. The only people it's wedging are themselves. They seem to be for it. I can only assume that councillor Davis is for this. I haven't heard anybody in this council stand up and say, we're going to fight this. We don't think it's right. Now, I understand that we can't stop the state necessarily, but I am not hearing from this council anything that gives me confidence that we're going to try and get the best possible outcome for our council, for our ratepayers, and for the community. And the fact that councillor Davis hasn't discussed any of the details, the fact that councillor Mackay won't even say what his idea is publicly, indicates to me, indicates to me that he is absolutely running scared about what's going to happen with this school. There are massive problems. Well, councillor Mackay had 10 minutes to speak about where he thinks this school should go, why it shouldn't go here, why it's important. He didn't do that. He deliberately said he wasn't going to do that. So he's come into the place where he represents the people of Brisbane on a motion about probably the most significant issue... probably the most significant issue in his ward, and he says deliberately, 'I'm not going to discuss that. I'm not going to say anything about that'. Who does that? Who does that? So let's be clear. I'm not sure this is the right site for a school. And I would be very sad if I thought council was just doing a deal behind the scenes with the state government to allow this land to be handed over and future generations of children will have to go through the floods that kids in schools I represent went through because they were horrific. I'd like to know what council is doing on this matter. I'd like to know why we haven't had a discussion in this chamber about where things are going. We can do that in confidence if there are confidential information that we're not supposed to know, not supposed to be public. There are methods to do that. But let's be clear. This council is doing a deal with the state despite councillor Davis's sort of equivocation about what's going on. So I'd like to know, anyone? 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 What those arrangements are? If, as we've heard, that there are already officer-level discussions going on, presumably the land disposal will have to come up here at some point to council, so why aren't we having an open discussion about it? So let me be clear. I, I just think that again, this, this is a deliberate tactic of this LNP council who want to deflect from their own problems and they're bringing in these state issues because they think that they can point-score on them. You can't be tricky, you can't be tricky if you don't have your cards all lined up to start with, and you absolutely don't. What's this council's position? Are we selling the land to the state? Are they resuming it? Have they made us an offer? Are we doing a land swap? How much land are they going to take? None of this stuff has been made public and I don't even know if council knows. But let me be clear, instead of discussing, instead of discussing the substantive issues around this important matter, this council brings in this political motion instead. That is laziness. That is petty. And it really does a disservice to the residents of Walter Taylor Ward, who I think know exactly who is to blame for the densification of this area. That was the best bit of the whole speech from councillor McCaughan. Like the reason densification of Intrapilly, Tuong, St Lucia was somebody else's fault. Councillor Simmons, the planning chairperson, trashed his own suburbs. His best mate and campaign manager, councillor McCaughan, helped him do it. And in the minute councillor Simmons saw there was a problem, he left and councillor McCaughan's run the seat down to a marginal seat. So standing up and screaming that, 'Oh, the densification, this is terrible, this is terrible', and somehow claiming they had nothing to do with it, let's, let's just reflect on the fact it's their fault.
councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks Mr Chair. I rise to enter the debate and provide some context as to why the state resuming the Tuong Bowls Club is in fact a bad deal for us ratepayers. As a former Chair for Environment and Parks, I have a very keen understanding of how important it is to create and protect open space in our city. Better green space is something that the Shriner Council has made a top priority. We have over 2,000 parks with more being created all the time, but with our city population growing, it's imperative that we don't take any backward steps. This is why we have a no-net-loss policy. Now, it's no secret that the significant growth in the western suburbs has culminated in the need for a new school. But for the same reason we need to accommodate a new school, we need to make sure that green space and other facilities are protected. Right now, we're at risk of losing it. And as Finance Chair, I can confidently say the contribution from the state that they will make to council for this site will be nowhere near enough for us to purchase a brand-new site within the catchment of the same size. And perhaps that's something that councillor Sri and I can actually agree on. We all know that the Tuong Bowls Club has significant flooding issues. The land isn't developable and it's zoned sport and reg. These three factors mean the state won't provide council with the funds required to purchase new land and convert it for the same purpose. And that's why we've brought forward today's motion.
Point of order Chair?
We are calling on the state...
Excuse me councillor Cunningham. Point of order councillor Sri.
This is not a trick question, but would councillor Cunningham take a quick question?
No.
Thank you councillor Cunningham, continue.
We are calling on the state to first purchase and then gift to council at no cost the new land required to offset the land for the new school. This will allow the residents of the western suburbs to enjoy the public facilities that they have available and ensure that their lifestyle remains intact. The decision for the school site has been made, but the state need to acknowledge the impact this has on residents beyond the provision of a new school. The Department of Education has formed when it comes to treating council like a landbank. Now, Labor Council is in this place cheered when the department moved to resume parkland in Balmoral. And then they've also been the Palashay Government's cheerleaders on this latest land grab. Council's parkland and reserves are precious. Ratepayers should not be punished for poor planning from the state. This motion clearly and calmly seeks to resolve the matter.
councillor Cunningham, just, can you pause for a tick? If councillors are involved in conversations, they should be wearing face masks to observe separation please. Or take it outside. Thank you councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks Mr Chair. I was just summing up to say that the motion clearly and calmly seeks to resolve the matter and provide a pathway forward, and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the, that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. Thank you, we have a motion for the adjournment to allow for a dinner break, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Allen. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will have an adjournment for one hour that commences now when the doors are locked. Put my microphone on. We're in debate on the notified, notified motion. Councillor Davis, any summing up?
Oh, thank you Mr Chair. And can I thank all of the councillors that participated in the debate, particularly councillor McCaughan, who gave a very strong view on what was happening in his ward around the proposed new school on the Tuong Bowls Club sign, and of course to councillor Cunningham, who also talked about that this council, the Shriner Council, has a policy that we have no net loss of green space. I'd like to thank councillor Sri for indicating his support for this motion. Unfortunately, he's not here. I appreciate his contribution suggesting that council could just go and rezone the ABC site and somehow or other that would gift the land to us at no cost. But of course, we know that there is a much greater process in that and much compensation to be considered and that would cost well in advance of the $43.5 million, which was the exchanged purchase price last year. Of course councillor Cassidy indicated that at this time he couldn't vote in support of this because I used to be a minister in the Newman Government. And, and of course, we heard from councillor Johnson, who was very firm and very strident, wanting to have answers. She needed to have answers as to why we're moving this motion. Well, councillor Johnson, if you were here, I might be able to answer those questions. But of course, she's not. So this is a really very straightforward motion, Mr Chair. We are simply asking something very reasonable of the state government and, and that is that the ratepayers of Brisbane expect that the state government should step up and identify and gift to council the equivalent green space to account for that loss that would be, would come of the new vertical school at Tuong. And I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. We now move the notified motion to the vote. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Aye, the ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Howard. Please ring the bells for one minute. Can you, Dorian, thank you. Thank you councillors, the division is the vote on the notified motion. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Clark?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour.
Thank you councillors. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Landers.
Chair, I have one here for there to be no parking along Castle Grove Avenue with line markings and signage. And I also have one here regarding hemant drainage.
Thank you. Any further petitions, councillors? May I have a motion please for the receipt of the petition?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by the deputy mayor that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No? Is there any general business? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Very briefly, I would just like it noted in the minutes in Hansard that on this night when we return to dinner to debate the matters of the day, that not one opposition councillor could be bothered to come back and represent their constituents.
Thank you councillor Adams. Any further general business? Thank you councillors, I declare the meeting closed.